Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 1:05 PM and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of August 14th, 2018 is called to order. The item on the agenda, next item, is public participation in the State Board of Education meeting. Marilyn, do we have individuals who wish to address the State Board at this time?
We do. Let me remind you that each speaker will be limited to five minutes to address the board. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments heard during public participation. And you have the guidelines on the forms you filled out. And I will tell you who is speaking and then who is next, and you can monitor your time here. So, our first speaker is Lois Lofton Donovan, and she will be followed by Delaney Huntune.
I love this seat, you know. Well, good afternoon. I am not representing AFT Michigan for my five minutes of fame today. I am a concerned citizen and an organized labor and human rights activist, a retired educator, and I'm here in opposition of the new proposed Michigan K-12 standards for social studies. I am deeply disheartened by some of the deletions and the new language that appears to whitewash history to meet some political aspirations for some individuals. The document that came out of the Social Studies Revision Committee leaves a lot to be desired. This made me wonder if perhaps there was some form of adult bullying and intimidation within the committee. How else could such intelligent, proficient, and accomplished Michigan Department of Ed personnel allow uninvited individuals to actively participate on the committee and releasing a revision that has led to such an uproar across the state? The United States Constitution is a Republican, a republic, I'm sorry, not a Republican, excuse me, is a republic, but I do not support the use of the term core values. Not everyone shares the same core values for the good of all people. For example, the Ku Klux Klan organization's core values are not for the betterment of all people. The organization finds value in terrorizing people of color and white persons who do not share their vision. Core democratic values provide a more clarification of the intent of using values in the state standards. Standards for C-2.01, I recommend keeping the original language. The LGBTQ struggle is a human and civil rights issue and should be included in the standards and not as an optional example. Standards 8.3.1, keep the original language relating to the Civil Rights Movement of the African-Americans and the role of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, and not as an option. Standard 8.3.3, the women's rights movement has not reached its peak as of yet, and therefore Rhodes vs. Wade should be back in the standards. Standards 8.3.4, the new language is totally unacceptable, and I will quote, "And how the expansion of the rights of some groups can be viewed as an infringement of the rights of others? This language, as an African-American female who has struggled the majority of her life for the equal opportunity to exhibit my intelligence and skill of ability and not be judged by the color of my skin or gender, is not acceptable." And Dr. Z, I listened to you today, and I had used bias, but I turned it to prospective, and it has a negative perspective. And in closing, I am confident in the Michigan Department of Ed and this board to do what is right and best for all Michigan K-12 students. I would like to thank MDE for providing an opportunity for public comment in Detroit in September, and I also appreciate you listening to me speed read my concerns today. I did it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Delaney Huntune is the next speaker, followed by Bethany Locke.
Hi, my name is Delaney Huntune. I'm with Michigan Hands and Voices. I have two children that are deaf and hard of hearing and currently have IEPs, but I am not here to speak to them, for them. I'm here to speak for a couple of parents that I work for. I am also an advocate through Michigan Hands and Voices, and that's who I'm going to be talking about. One of my families, they are actually in the process of, after living in some multi-generational home that's been lived in for three generations, they're actually in the process of selling that house in order to move to a different school district in order to get their children the services that they need. And in reference to that, the parents have, one of their children has, is deaf blind, and that school district told the parents that they had to decide whether they wanted the deafness service or the blind service, and they couldn't service the whole child. And even writing many IEPs and everything, we still ended up struggling with getting the closed caption. They weren't in that closed caption when available, but they never bothered to check to see if it was available. In one of the meetings, they're like, oh, I don't think CNN does closed captioning. And the parents whipped out the phone and went right to it and went right here. That child was, they were responsible for gathering information from that news chest, but they were never, for three months on their education, they were barely even able to hear it because of room noise and everything else. So, they had to fight to get the closed captioning. Move on to a different family. Another one of my families, their child has been waiting over a year for a certified leveled interpreter. The school has been supposedly looking for an interpreter. I actually personally called the district and gave them a phone number of an interpreter that had been in my own child's school district. And when I ran into that person, I was like, can they ever call you? They never even called. But yet, they were at that meeting saying, oh, we have a shortage of interpreters. But when asked, so who did you contact, because I gave you temporary? One of my own children had a subcontracted interpreter for almost a year and a half while their school district, while our school district looked for an interpreter to hire. But all they're keep on doing is giving this family excuse after excuse with why this child can't succeed, because he needs that interpreter to get full information so that he can be able to be a functioning member of society. And, you know, that's why I put in my own children's IEP. My goal for them is that they will be functioning members of society, and we want them to be able to have the resources in order to get them there. So, really what I'm looking for is that the students will be able to have equal access to information and so that they have to achieve the potential that's in them. Speaking from my own children's cases, I ended up going through four mediations to get my girls the services that they need, two for each. It was the same school district. You would have thought that they learned the first two times around, but in a four-year span, which is the span between my children, they seem to forget everything, and we had to start over again. So, it's very frustrating to a parent who, we live in an isolated community, because I do, it's not in, you know, the suburbs, we're pretty out there, 26 miles to the, you know, Mount Pleasant type thing, you know? So, it's very frustrating when you feel isolated and alone, and you can't even get services for your kid, or you have to fight so hard to get them.
Hi, I am here in regards to my own daughter. This little girl right here, she cannot say her ABCs, she cannot say mom or daddy, or I love you. She does not know the meaning of the word no. She is deaf. Her deafness is the biggest disability she has and the only one that she cannot overcome without specialized training in American Sign Language. She has a few other disabilities. She is too fat due to oral aversion, and she cannot walk independently because her semicircular canals are debuffed, although she does like to try. During IUP on March 15th of this year, Michigan School for the Deaf told us that she was too damaged to attend their school. We were also told that MSD is an academic school in which my child does not qualify. This is a blatant disregard to not only the ADA but the IDEA. They basically stated in no certain terms that my child does not deserve an education in a community of language that she has the ability to understand. This is no different than denying a child in a wheelchair to attend a public school. The principal also stated that IUP, that the PT, the physical therapy, are only there once a week, and that is not enough. She only attends PT once a week outside of school, when she's not attending the school. Trained professionals said that she only needs PT once a week. The principal is not a medical professional and should not be making decisions on medical necessities or medical reasons. I have also contacted the CHARGE Foundation, which is what my daughter has, and there are five other kids at Michigan School for the Deaf that have CHARGE syndrome. I have talked extensively with another mother whom my child is exactly alike, and still I am told that my child cannot attend. All I'm asking today is we look at how the children like mine are being educated in our state so that these children can have a good education and a chance for a future. Thank you.
The next speaker is Janelle Frost, followed by Nina Hodge and her team. We're ready when you are.
Thank you. I did write out what I wanted to say today, so, and I did make some copies, so I'll let you guys have those after I'm done. But after listening to the two that went before me, I probably are not going to say exactly what's in here, because I myself am a parent of a child who is deaf-blind. My child is 16 years old, and he's doing very well, and thank goodness, because he did have the resources he needed. He was in the right place at the right time, basically, in the state of Michigan. I learned that after, when he was about five, six years old, I started to work for this nonprofit that goes out and helps parents who have children like my child, and I saw on the opposite side of the street, in the next county, it was much different. And it really broke my heart. It breaks my heart for these individuals right here, because I know the potential of these children, and I know what can happen. Most of our children have cognitive functioning of very same level as another child, they just don't have the accessibility in order to get that. Having accessibility to the information that the child next to them is getting, but they're not getting because of a lack of resources. So, there's a lot of problems out there. You know, I've been doing this work for about 10 years now, and I can't even tell you how many families I've talked to and the heartbreak, and it just, it really does make me want to cry, to break down and cry, because I haven't seen much progress. And looking at the state of our special education in Michigan, you can understand that. I mean, we're at the very bottom now. Something has to give. There has to be some ways to correct this or for us to do something differently. So, you know, thinking about the resources out there, we have a department, Michigan Department of Low Incident Outreach, that supports the families who have children that are deaf and hard of hearing, and they also support families that have children that are blind. Now, unfortunately, in that department, there's 18 individuals working there. There's two, two, for the families of the children that are deaf or hard of hearing. And they're servicing the whole entire state of Michigan, servicing families like the two that you just heard, and there's many more that we can bring here today that do not get the resources. And these two individuals are actually just recently having two full-time people working there. For many years, it was one, and it was part-time. So, you know, it's improving in that way, but we need to give more resources to these individuals so that they can support not only those families, but the professionals that are working with them, because they're not getting the resources needed to understand the importance. If we can get those children to learn language and communication early, within the first five years, because that's when language is mostly learned, if we can do that, then the rest of those school years can be accessed very easily with interpreters and qualified interpreters. But they have to learn language first. And I mean, I'm working with families where this child is 11 years old. The family's been fighting for five years to get an interpreter. They have a parapro that's working with the child, five years, who is learning sign language. This child is fluent in ASL because his mother taught him. He did not have someone else help him, because she wanted to communicate with her child. But when she goes to school, or puts him in the school district, they then, you know, provide an individual to help give the information of the teacher, a parapro who's learning ASL. That's not the requirements in the laws and what IDA and MARS requires. But when the family goes and does a formal complaint to the state two years ago, did anything happen? No, there's still, there's an IEP coming up in about two weeks where they already said, yeah, we still don't have an interpreter. We're hoping, we're hoping. But they have to have the resources, and they have to have the backing of, you know, the state putting pressure on them, saying, yes, you need to provide this, and if not, this is what's going to happen. So, I'm begging you today to look into providing some more resources in that department, and not only that, providing resources to the Michigan School for the Deaf. The incident that Ms. Locke just talked about of her daughter, being said that she's too disabled, has been said among many other families, that they're refusing to accept any child that is deaf and hard of hearing plus, and I'm guessing because they want to improve their numbers. But what does that do but deny a child access to education when they can't get it anywhere else, when the language is the barrier? So, we need to look into resources for them, and at the state level, looking at making sure all children receive FAP, a Free and Appropriate Public Education. Thank you.
The next group of people is three people that requested to come to the table together. It's Nina Hodge, Makaya Small, and Shakitha Parker. And then they will be followed by Loretta Cunningham Powell.
Hi, my name is Makaya Small, and I work at Above &amp; Beyond Learning Center. I've been working there for eight years now, and I love my babies. I honestly do. I have built relationships with my children and their families, and they all come back and request Ms. Small. But I also have my CDA, and this is my third year upon it. I'm lead infant teacher in my area right now. I love, love, love working at Above &amp; Beyond. I mean, it can't get no better than working at Above &amp; Beyond right now. However, I just had surgery. I just had a major surgery, and I am unable to make ends meet. However, I am doing, I am, you know, out on medical leave without pay. I can't pay my light bill, can't make sure I have more food in my house because I have no money. I can't pay. No way. But I believe I am a quality childcare staffer at Above &amp; Beyond, and it's a struggle to, it's a struggle since I have been off work. It honestly is. And, you know, I'm here, and I'm living proof that it is a struggle. It's a struggle not having the only pay in-house and don't have nothing for no light bill or rent. However, my doctor has given me six weeks until I come back, enough time to heal. I just want to ask you guys just for more funding, more funding to ensure that while I'm out on medical leave, I can have some type of way to make sure my bills are paid, more food is in my house for me, and... Thank you.
Hi, I am Shakitha Parker, and I am too also with Above &amp; Beyond Learning Center. And just to piggyback off a little what Ms. Small says too about the funding, I am too, I'm getting ready to go on maternity leave, so I will also need those funding to, those fundings to. Also, we would like to talk about raising the wages, because I have been working at Above &amp; Beyond Learning Center for about six years, and now I'm at the point where I want to start my own family. So, although this is, I am passionate about working at Above &amp; Beyond Learning Center with the low wages or whatever, I feel like it doesn't pay enough, so it's hard for me to make ends meet as well. So, with that, even though it's a good place, I would probably have to look at job opportunities other places. So, with raising the wages, that will help me and my own family.
Well, I brought these two ladies with me because I'm the owner of Above &amp; Beyond Learning Center, and I brought these two ladies with me because they've been with me for years. She had major surgery, and I was at the hospital with her. Her mother passed a cancer. I trust these two ladies with my babies. She's about to start her family too at the same time. I do pay them more than minimum wage. I do give them more than that. However, they need more to substantiate their family's income and stuff. I don't have the money in early child development to help her and assist her from being off of work. I don't have the funding there. I do have a GSRP program with 36 kids, but they don't work with my GSRP kids. They work in the childcare part. And so, I just want to make a note, if we are guaranteeing $15 an hour for janitors, and we know the impact for janitors, we should know the impact profession that these ladies are doing. If the early childhood profession does not provide, they provide quality, it can't impact multiple children if it don't impact, we don't have the profession. We need greater investment in early childhood so that the minimum compensation for early childhood profession can be brought to $15 an hour across the state, because the thing is, is I'm a four-star center, and these ladies leave me who bring quality, that can lower my stars too at the same time. And then, we need more funding inside. It's not about the stars, anything. We have to think about the quality of the children and knowing that they reach them at a very early age and molding and shaping their minds in our district, in our area, at a 48234 and a 48205, which is an at-risk population. So, I want you all to think, when you think about the wages and stuff, these two ladies here who was being dedicated to the children, to my business, and knowing that she's off of medical, and knowing she's about to have a child, and the wages that we pay them, we're not thinking about how we doing our future for an investment for our children. And these ladies are working on next, going for their associate degrees through to teach. I just want to thank you guys for listening and our passion for the kids. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Loretta Cunningham Powell.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to leave some materials for you that you can pass around if you'd like. Here. Oh, I need to get one from each, I'm sorry. Thank you. And I'm going to read this so that I can stay within my time, and I do want to say that I am really touched by what I've heard from parents who have children that are deaf and blind, and even the young ladies that just left here. There's some other things that I do want to bring to your attention. I want to thank you in advance for taking time to hear my voice in a plea for assistance. The problem is, the Office of Partnership District has had four leaders in the past 10 months. Each leader arrived with a different emphasis, a different priorities, and a different way of work. None have had any experience in moving a persistently low-achieving school or district into a high-performing one, apart from Dr. Paula Daniels. I have turned around 46 schools in the state of Michigan alone, two in Chicago and one in Detroit, and most of them, within a year, were off priority lists or persistently low-achieving list, with two of them making it from the zero percentile to 85%. That's where you see the asterix on that one chart that's there, and I see that I didn't do the second page, but I can get that for you. Unfortunately, Dr. Shelton has not turned around a single school in her entire career, nor has her supervisor, Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, or most of the liaisons, or even the employees at MDE. Dr. Shelton has openly indicated to all liaisons that it's not our job to improve academic achievement, even when schools are asking and begging for technical assistance on academic achievement, on attendance, on behavior. So, my question is, why call this agency, the Michigan Department of Education, if we're not going to provide assistance for those schools that are saying, hey, I can't do it alone, hey, I need some help, can you give me some recommendations, can you give me a suggestion, what can I do to get the kids here on time? I poured my blood, sweat, and tears into seven assigned districts for the last six months, now only six as of yesterday. They are all ready to rock and roll by September 2018 if Dr. Shelton and whoever else will move the heck out of the way and let me do it. Two weeks ago, I was removed from the districts and simply told, somebody's got to take one for the team. Four days later, I was returned as liaison to the districts, but I was told the following, Powell, you do not visit or provide technical assistance or do any PowerPoints with any partnership district without prior review and approval. I was showing something called Building Academic Muscle, where it actually explains to these schools how to do a fast turnaround in one year. I was also told, do not provide any advice nor discuss academic, curricular, instructional, attendance, behavior strategies with any partnership schools. Three, I was told that district visits already on my calendar may be canceled or reduced, and all PowerPoints on my laptop are forbidden until her personal review and edits. I was also told to keep a daily online calendar. I was told to change my mind of thinking in terms of understanding that it's not my job to turn around persistently low-achieving schools. I'm mostly an observing, silent partner with a limited role in the process. Here's my request to you as a board. I successfully have overseen dozens of school and district turnarounds, and more... I successfully have overseen dozens of school and district, uh, turnarounds and more than, uh, uh, the entire, um, SRO ODP team and Dr. Shelton combined. So I'm requesting consideration for the, the following. Permission to continue with my six assigned districts unrestricted, unhindered by Dr. Shelton and others who do not understand this type of work. Two, move me to a new cubicle away from the OPD department where I might be able to quietly do the work that I love. Three, remove Dr. Lawana Shelton as my evaluator. And please remove all of her reprimands and investigatory and insubordination proceedings. They need to be rescinded. They need to be removed from my file. Make any fair-minded person, uh, my pers- my evaluator and change my annual evaluation and base it on objective measurable data. In other words, how many of my schools had a significant achievement increase? That should be about fifty percent. Uh, increases in the overall index score, ten percent. Um, decreases in student suspensions in those schools that I'm dealing with. That should be about ten percent. I just want to be measured by what is happening in the schools that is positive. If there are measurable and significant achievement increases in these districts, I hope that this, what I'm doing, can become a pilot. Thank you very much.
Thank you to all who addressed the State Board of Education today. We will now move, um, into discussion items of the Committee of the Whole. And that is the presentation on Parent Dashboard for School Transparency. Um, this presentation on the Parent Dashboard for School Transparency supports parents and other audiences in making informed decisions regarding various topics of interest on schools throughout the state. This presentation covers work plan for Phase Two of the Dashboard, parent focus group feedback and recommendations from the Arts Education Work Group. This is an information item only. No action is required today. And our presenters are Vanessa Kiesler and Chris Janzer. Thank you for joining us at the board table.
Okay, like Sheila said, this is, um, our periodic update on the dashboard. We also, after this one, I think we'll go to quarterly or biannually. Um, we're continuing to build out, but there's not necessarily the same volume of information each month, uh, that there was during the development, so, um. So that'll turn over to Chris.
Alrighty. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. It's been a few months since I've been here. Um, so I'm gonna, we're gonna go over, uh, some of what we are calling Phase Two of the implementation of Parent Dashboard. I've got some, um, parent feedback to share, uh, some design screens, um, and then some workgroup recommendations. So, uh, as far as our schedule goes, you might remember this from last fall where we were showing this at the presentations. We are done with our requirements. Um, we're actually in the middle of our design and build, uh, portions of Phase Two. We've started a little bit of acceptance testing, um, which is basically, uh, our vendor has done some development work on my school data in the, uh, test portion of it and we're kind of looking to see what that looks like and all that. Um, the thing I will point out here though is that Phase Two, unlike Phase One, is a rolling release, so it's not going to be all at once. Um, we'll be releasing stuff, um, kind of throughout the fall and into next year. Um, so what does Phase Two cover? Um, we've got sort of four big areas here. Um, we're, um, adding some new metrics. Um, these will probably be one of the first things that we see this fall. Um, so the metrics cover different, um, sort of aspects of school staffing. Um, we're enhancing some of our student group reporting. Um, so we're adding some gender information, um, as well as some of, um, some of the student groups like English learners and special education. Um, and then the high school, non-high school overview. Um, if you remember when we released, um, the overview has eight metrics. It's static. Um, if it's not a high school that you're looking at, the graduation, and we've got a couple of other sort of high school only metrics on there that are blank for our elementary and middle schools. So we've, we've come up with a solution to that where, uh, if you're looking at a non-high school, basically you're going to see a couple of different metrics. So that we're presenting a little bit more data on that front page. Um, Points of Pride is, um, gets more at, um, sort of the holistic story of a school. Um, so this goes beyond our test data. Um, this is, uh, things like, uh, clubs and sports that are offered at a school, before and after-school programs, um, uh, that kind of a thing. Um, that, this will also be, uh, we, so we've started collecting data on this, uh, back in the spring. It's a voluntary collection, um, so we are going to be, uh, we're a little light right now, but we're going to be advertising heavily as people come back to the schools this fall to say, hey, this is going to be on the dashboard coming out in a couple of months. Uh, if you want parents to see this information, um, send us your info so that we can display it. But this will also be coming out, um, I think late October. Peer school information, uh, so again, in our initial release, if you remember that all of the graphs had a, a bar or a line that showed, uh, a school compared to up to thirty of its peers, either by similar demographics or location. Um, that's all we showed there. Um, we're expanding that or enhancing it, um, to basically show the actual list of schools and then being able to click on them to visit those schools' dashboards essentially. Um, and then the big one that we're working on, and this one is coming later because it is much more comprehensive than we originally thought, is a school comparison tool. This is a, uh, very customizable, uh, in terms of, um, looking at multiple schools and multiple metrics, um, and being able to compare them. So it's, it's more than what we had originally thought it would have been. Um, originally, we were gonna, we were thinking this would be out by Thanksgiving as well, but, um, this will actually be used not only in the dashboard, but the rest of my school data as well. So I saw the value in providing this, uh, tool or functionality, uh, for the rest of the portal. So that's sort of why it's a little bit delayed, um, than what we had originally anticipated. So the next few slides, um, I wanted to show some of our design work, uh, in these sort of four pieces that we're working on. So, um, the first one, um, I'm really just showing the navigation here. So if you remember our left-hand navigation, um, it was a very simple menu. We had student data, staff data and our, um, school index. This shows an expanded view of the staffing metrics that we'll have out. So the first two up there, and my eyesight is not that great, but the first two we've had, uh, since the initial phase, so the bottom three we'll be adding. Um, so you'll see these later this fall. Um, and then, um, Points of Pride, we're also thinking, we gotta do a little bit more parent testing, but, um, we're thinking there will be a Points of Pride link in that left-hand blue bar as well. Graphs for these new metrics will look the same. You'll be able to switch between a, a bar chart and a line graph. Um, we'll show up to three years of information and we'll still have the state and peer comparisons for that. Um, so nothing new there. Just wanted to show kind of what we were thinking for the navigation. Um, next up, Points of Pride, and this slide is actually a little bit outdated already, um, since I completed this last week. So, um, originally, when we were asking for parent feedback on sort of what they wanted Points of Pride to look like, look like, we had a, uh, even split between sort of the view on the left there, which is, um, what we've been calling the Pinterest kind of view. And then on the right is what we've been calling the accordion view. And so we are actually going to start off with the accordion view, um, which you can see, you click and it expands. And this is the optional collection where schools will tell us, you can see here in the example, that, um, the school offers a whole bunch of different, um, foreign languages. Um, but then we'll have filters and all that sort of stuff to make it a little bit more manageable for our parents as they're looking at it.
Was it, I'm just wondering, so the school wouldn't put in, they would, it sort of had a, a menu that they would?
Exactly, yeah. So, um.
But they have things that they want to put in that are not on the menu?
The way that we're collecting it is through, um, it's a supi collection. Um, it's, uh, basically the database that has all of the general information on a school. So like the address, the principal's name, phone number, that kind of stuff. It has the grades. Um, schools are able to go in. Um, there's basically a template that they fill out with all of this stuff. So if something doesn't apply to them, they just kind of leave it blank.
But there's something, uh, that, a category that they have, something special that isn't listed. Is there a place for them to put that?
So, no. Um, so we've, we've, we've kept it pretty, um, static. Um, we did that years ago and we had, um, a lot of issues with that as far as like editing the content and all of that. So, yeah, so, um, great question. The way that we've built this though is if there is, um, an offering or program that, um, we're not currently collecting, that's something that we can ramp up pretty easily.
They would just contact the?
Yeah, so it's a little nimble, but it's not nimble to the point where we're asking people to, you know, upload the history of the school typed out and all of that sort of stuff. Yeah. Um, great question. Other states, um, that we've talked to about this have actually also started moving away from that. Um, I know Oregon used to do like a, uh, principal letter that was supposed to be updated every year and they found that, you know, they did it the one time and five years later, it's the same letter. So it's, it's working through that kind of stuff. Um, peer schools, um, so, um, this is kind of exciting. So one of the, um, pieces of feedback we got from parents is they really liked using the maps, um, the map feature that we have. They wanted us to expand those offerings too. So peer schools, if we're looking at the left side of this slide, um, I cut out, uh, a little piece of the page that would show up below a graph. Um, the blue and the white button are there currently. What would be new is the little links below those. Um, that says, uh, you know, view your peer schools, basically. Um, a person could click on that and the map on the right side, um, what we're envisioning is if they clicked on the link below the closest by distance schools geographically, they could actually see a map where those schools sit. Um, one of the other pieces of feedback that we got were, was, from parents was that, um, they were interested in knowing if, especially if they drove their kids to school, what other schools were sort of along that commute, basically. Um, so, um, this again will be coming later this fall. And then finally, again, this could change drastically, um, but this is a very early look at a school comparison, uh, tool. So again, you can see we've used a map. Um, we also have, um, basically a customized school list. We're thinking, um, of comparing four or five schools and then below, um, you can, and you can kind of see the start of it here. Um, you can select different metrics that you want to compare those schools on. This will also include comparisons of the Points of Pride. So parents will be able to, um, compare whether or not a school has banned or some sort of special ed program or et cetera, et cetera. Um, so moving on to the parent focus groups.
Points of Pride, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The Points of Pride, is it going to be the same, same categories for every school? And then if somebody, if a school doesn't want to populate it, then it's gonna, they're gonna drop down, it's gonna say NA or?
Yeah, that's, we're still working on what exactly.
It's not exactly a Point of Pride.
To show. Yeah. Well, and that's, that's a great question too. So we've started asking ourselves.
Yeah, I don't know that they'd want to, I thought the idea was behind it to highlight things that they were particularly proud about. And this would be highlighting things, maybe they made a decision, but you know, now they can't even.
Right. Well, the parents were sort of questioning the label Points of Pride as well because it's more like offerings of programs and services. So we do have a little bit more work to do to sort of finesse what, how that will, what that'll be called.
And you said that the, the original idea of Points of Pride, you're moving away from that because it's too difficult to, it's, it could be anything kind of a.
So the original way that we collected this was a mix of what I kind of just showed, so like foreign languages, advanced coursework, that sort of stuff. But we also had sort of a catch-all text box in the collection where if someone wanted to talk about some thing they were doing that they were proud of, they were able to put that in as a narrative.
As a narrative or a video? I thought that we kind of talked about maybe a video, kind of, you know, you could see the passion of why some things that they're particularly proud of or?
Yeah, no. So what I'm talking about, we did this about five years ago. And so this, the way that we used to do it was collecting text essentially. And then we would display that on my school data. The challenges with that were, um, filtering out things that were inappropriate, uh, misspelled, um, y- y- that sort of stuff where it sounds like it's pretty trivial, but it took us weeks to sift through three thousand-plus schools submissions. So. So moving on to the, uh, focus groups, um, we had four focus groups that met back in June, um, that were wrapped up. Um, we have our, um, report and results from that. Um, as you can see, they were, um, held, um, across the state. Um, not as widespread geographically as before, but, um, we had, uh, some in the Detroit area, uh, up in mid-Michigan and then, um, over in Grand Rapids. Um, we had twenty-nine participants total across the four groups. Um, you can see the breakout there. Um, we had mainly African-Americans in the groups this time. Um, they were still educated parents. That was, um, similar to our, our groups from last fall. Um, and again, we did have, uh, an economically diverse showing there. Um, also a little bit different from last fall is most of these twenty-nine parents have used my school data. I believe last fall, we were a little bit more split between those that have used it before and those that have not. So kind of going, my, uh, next few slides just kind of go through their feedback. They were very interested in a comparison tool. And as I said before, they really liked using the maps that we had and were excited to see us, um, incorporating more of that mapping, um, on the pages.
When, when you said most were educated, does that mean that they're tech savvy?
Um, this was formal education, so maybe not necessarily tech savvy, but they had some sort of a, uh, post-secondary degree or certificate.
Do we measure that as well? I mean, I see you, that they use the MySchool data, but I'm just wondering if we have a way to measure?
Yeah, I didn't get that information from, uh, public policy associates. And I believe the feedback sessions were more of a, um, discussion. It wasn't like actually using the site. Um, what will be interesting though is, uh, as part of our development process, we're going to be doing one-on-one user testing later this month or into September where they will actually be sort of navigating some of our screens. Um, so we'll be able to see, um, did we build it right where, hey, they can find Points of Pride easily or?
Oh, we know educated can be different from, okay.
Yep. Um. Let's see, so, uh, parents were also, as I mentioned, um, really interested in being able, being able to compare schools beyond just the academics. Um, so things like, uh, demographics, culture and climate in a school, the Points of Pride and, um, behavioral indicators like discipline, that kind of stuff. They were interested in having some sort of a component that, uh, would show comments or reviews written by other parents. I know there are other sites out there that do this, um, for schools. Not even talking about Amazon where you can read reviews about products. Um, so there was some interest in that. Some parents were also interested in, um, comparing not for the purpose of choosing a school, but for, um, being able to look at the school that they were, um, invested in and wanting to improve, areas where they needed improvement in the school. Parents also recognize that the, um, the grade level makeup of buildings in, throughout the state are all different and that's a challenge when comparing. So, um, I think everyone here knows that elementary school doesn't always mean K-five or K-six. Um, it could mean K-eight or whatever, K-three. Um, so there was, there was knowledge of that and that, that's a challenge. We're thinking through how best to sort of categorize that, um, a little bit better than what, what we've done. Um, I know we've done an analysis and I think we've got well over a hundred different grade combinations throughout the state. So it's, it's a challenging environment when you're trying to figure out how to put schools into three or four different buckets. And then the final point here, uh, parents also sort of acknowledge that there are negative impacts to comparison if context is not provided or, or enough context is, um, provided on the dashboard. Um, for Points of Pride, um, so parents were really eager to see this information. Um, we didn't get any consensus on the priority of indicators. Um, so, and again, this is sort of a design challenge as to, um, so thinking back to that accordion, accordion view that I showed, it's sort of like, well, what would we put towards the top that parents are more likely to see versus scrolling to the bottom? So we did a little bit. to see versus scrolling to the bottom. So, we did a little bit of work on trying to group the, and I can't even remember how many different points of pride indicators we had, but they did come up with, looks like five different sort of bigger, more generic groups there that we could fit these into. So, we are doing a little bit more work on that. Continuing points of pride, so, we have to do some more work on the terminology and acronyms, so, career and technical education. They might know what CTE stands for, but maybe not necessarily know sort of what that encompasses. Couple other recommendations were including career and, career pathway and college placement assistance. So, again, building in that flexibility into being able to change the collection around a little bit quicker. This is something that we'll be looking at potentially adding in the future. And then there were questions about how the information is verified, given that it is self-reported and voluntary. And again, that's something that, you know, kind of having an open-ended text box as well, it's sort of, they recognize the challenges with this sort of stuff. Okay, so the high school, non-high school overview, this one, unlike points of pride, we actually did get a little bit more of a trend here as to what parents felt were important. Probably not surprisingly, if you remember from last fall, parents were really interested, and I think they rated the teacher-student ratio as most important to them. So, for Phase Two, the metrics that we have, they were still really interested in the school-level staffing data there. And then there were other parents who were also interested in some school safety information, not just discipline, but some, some of the physical safety measures in buildings as well. So, in general, they, they still like the overall current design, so we're not really tinkering with that all that much. We're just really sort of adding new things. The comparisons were good to have, so that the comparison tool, but parents still indicated that they rely on word-of-mouth from other parents in making whatever sorts of decisions about their child's education. And then they highlighted the need for communications mainly at the district level. So, that is something that we'll have to work on. I think we did a little bit of this in Phase One, providing some communications tools for districts to use to communicate to their parents. But the focus groups this time around sort of highlighted that again. So, we'll have to think through some of that. Okay, so this shows, this is rankings of the top five. So, the two columns on the left are sort of the points of pride. And then the columns on the right are the indicators that would, for, that would, for an elementary or middle school, replace some of the high school indicators. So, as you can see, the AP classes offered on the left was pretty meaningful to parents overall. But again, then we had kind of a drop-off in a lot of, in the middle, whereas on the right, you can see staffing metrics were the top two. And then we also looked at the read-by-grade-three law, and parents felt that that was important information to have on the dashboard as well. So, that would be something that we don't have a metric for now, but in the future, we would look at adding. And then last thing I'll mention as far as parent feedback, a couple of us, I actually can see a snapshot of a few of us there on the right, back in the middle of July, the Michigan Parent Teacher Association had a conference in Frankenmuth. So, MDE and SEPI partnered together. We had a little bit of, a little booth. SEPI kind of showed people how to navigate through the dash, not just the dashboard, My School Data, but they were highlighting the dashboard. And then I'm in there with one of our project managers and we were there to answer questions basically about the dashboard. And so, I've got a couple of observations and a comment from a parent that we received. We didn't get any negative comments throughout the day. Everyone that was familiar with it loved it. Those that weren't familiar with it were excited that the state was providing this tool to them to use. So, it was good feedback. It was valuable information. And we're hoping to do some more of this kind of info booth kind of stuff instead of just presentations to different groups. All right. So, shifting gears a little bit.
Say that, you know, the plethora of information that we're, that this is developing into, I think, I mean, I'm excited about it. I think it really shows the ridiculousness of trying to summarize a school by letter grade when there's, you know, I mean, the more we get into this, the more clear it is that schools differ and that an A school to somebody may be a C school to another and that it just does not make any sense to do, go in that direction. So, I appreciate kind of other things that this is showing besides the main, the main goal.
Well, and parents seem to have diverse interests, whether that's by geographic area or sort of their background or whatever. But, yeah, so it was interesting to sort of hear, school safety was, was sort of more in the forefront of parents' minds in some areas versus others and that kind of stuff.
Yep, exactly.
So, yeah, it's valuable feedback, for sure.
And I, I will say, adding to what Tom just mentioned, we had a group that convened here of folks from urban districts, which was great. And then I spoke with some of the other parents who were in some of the other convenings. And while I'm excited about the dashboard, they're obviously, and you pulled that out, concerned that they don't want this to emerge into another tool to beat parents or school districts over the head, but they really want it to be something that they can use to show where their school needs, needs improvement. So...
All right. So, moving on, we, so you might remember, we had a few work groups that helped us with some metric work during Phase One, but more to do. So, some of their work actually are some of the metrics that we're implementing for Phase Two. One of the ones that wasn't in the original policy document from, I think, two Junes ago now...
Just one.
Oh, just one. It feels like forever ago to me. Running a marathon here. The arts education work group was not in the original document, but we heard feedback from both parents, but also from the arts community, that this was some important information to include. And I think some of the people that were on the work group are here today. If you want to just kind of...
Raise your hand.
All right. So, thank you for the work.
Can you guys introduce yourselves to the board, please, the three of you?
Sarah Gonzalez, Creative, Michigan.
I'm Corey Michael Mayes with the Michigan Music Education Association.
And I very briefly tried to serve, contributing some ideas and mostly listened to people.
So, yeah, thank you. The, so the work group came up with some recommendations.
Really?
And I think we have three areas. I wasn't on it, so I'm not as familiar with this. But I, this one, the staffing measures, will actually be part of the staffing measures that we're doing for Phase Two. So, there was an interest in showing the percentage of teachers in the arts areas who were certified to teach the courses that they were teaching. So, we do have a teacher certification piece that I believe we'll be able to, I'm trying to remember now, back to the designs, if we have sort of a selector where you can kind of select general areas in the teaching profession to sort of slice and dice some of the certification data. But that will certainly be part of Phase Two. And that wasn't really a big lift. And actually, kind of talking about trying to be efficient with metrics and work group recommendations, there were several from the last round of work groups that we were able to combine to, into sort of one graph. So, it's not to overwhelm parents with, you know, another half dozen metrics. So, we're able to use sort of filters and that sort of stuff to honor the work group's work and present information to parents. So, that was one. Arts teacher FTE in ratio was another recommendation. This gets at the number of arts FTE in a school and sort of getting at that student-to-teacher ratio. We do something similar already, but we also include physical education in that. So, this is one that I think will be another fairly easy one to do for our next sort of round of metrics. Trying to see if there's anything else there. Again, this one is pretty straightforward as well.
Just trying to break down what we were already using to help parents understand better the quality and depth of the student experience, based on how much teacher time is dedicated to arts instruction in the school.
And then the last, I believe this is the last, the access and participation for students in the arts. So, this kind of gets at the, the courses that are offered and then how many students are actually enrolling in those courses. Enrollment, obviously, we would tackle through something like a SEPI collection, like the student enrollment sort of stuff. Offerings, again, depending on how we go about this, but we could do points of pride. And I think we get, I think we do like a generic, no, I think we do get into a little bit of the more specific arts, but more of the general categories, so like visual, dance, music, that sort of stuff.
So, what, one of the many things that our three guests and the work group brought to us was a sense of how this conversation is emerging nationally around arts education and how to report it. They brought us some examples from other states of metrics or collections or displays. So, helping, so that Michigan is talking about arts, access to the arts in, in a way that's similar to how the national conversation is emerging and borrowing from best practices here. And there are, like we said, we're collecting some things in the original points of pride, but that launched before this work group came back together. And, and so, we're looking at enhanced collection to get us closer to that best practice about, you know, we know how important the visual, fine theater, all of the arts are to students for their, their well, the well-rounded aspect of their education, but their academics as well and, and how that helps students achieve where we want them to go. So, this kind of is like a more refined way to help parents really understand what the offerings are and help us as a state talk about where we are and where we aren't advancing this aspect of our students' education.
Okay. So, next steps for this work would be including it in Phase Two or Three. Kind of talked a little bit about that already. I think further discussion does need to happen, both with our advocates regarding, so, if it's a new data collection, we do have to have legislative backing around that in order to collect it. Voluntary is easy because that's fine. And so, points of pride is sort of a, an easy way to do that. But if it's anything required, we'll have to have some legislation around that. And then, of course, making students aware that, you know, there, there is sort of movement here and to encourage, not only if, if this is a voluntary collection, but also because we are trying to have tighter linkages between the parent dashboard and those local school websites, to include this information on those webpages because there is parent interest in this as well. I think that's all I had. As always, the website is myschooldata.org/parentdashboard. We've got a bunch of materials on our own webpage as well. I think, any questions?
I mean? So, since the start of this, first of all, thank you. I, I know how complex this is and having served in the National Assessment Governing Board, almost is an assessment to show student outcome. You're dependent upon teacher inputs, fast school inputs. Self-reporting is always problematic in that it's not that people inflate things, it's just that they see the world from their vista. And so, comparing a smaller apple with a bigger apple can, two apples looking very similar. So, I, I recognize that you're juggling things. But one, one of the things that's always concerned me about our focus groups is that they're relatively homogeneous and they're not reflective of the very, very people we're hoping will use this website. So, I, I wondered, I thought that Pam had talked about some other resources for outreach. We still aren't penetrating that. And I recognize it's because you must not have access to different groups of people. Either volunteer organizations are not coming forward to give you access, or when you tap them, they're not responding.
Yeah, I think that's part of it. Sort of my own anecdote is, we had a gentleman at the PTA conference that we were at a few weeks ago come up and he led some sort of parent group in the Detroit area, gave us, he was like really interested in having us come to their September, they had something going on in September, basically. Like, yeah, we would love to, you know, get some information and potentially do like a booth there and all that. Emailed him shortly after, but have not gotten a response back. So, it's, that's part of it. I think part of it, too, and I hear this from other states that are doing this sort of thing as well, is the parents that aren't connected are the hardest to reach. And I don't, I've not heard of anyone coming up with a good way or an easier way to reach out to those parents.
Wait, so the reason that I'm worried about this is that the more sophisticated the dashboard becomes, the less likely it is that people will be able to navigate it if they don't have basic skills.
Right.
And that scares me a lot. It's, it becomes then an exercise in reporting for ESSA as opposed to something that will pull people who are in a less sophisticated means to a school that could actually make a difference for their children. And I thought that was the whole point of ESSA.
Yeah. Yeah, the ESSA requirements are very complex. We have another report that we have to do that is supposed to be for parents, but it's, it should be, it's so complex that we should hide it and not point anyone to it because it's, it's hard for us to understand sort of how all the things were written. One of the things that we're doing to try and sort of balance the want for information and overwhelming people is some of the suggestions for metrics that are a little bit more fine-grained, we're trying to work through where we might have some basic information related to that and then linked to it that is off the parent dashboard, but still part of My School Data. So, if you have a more savvy parent that is interested in, I don't, I, something more fine-grained with like English learners or something like that, they might see some basic English learner information on the parent dashboard, but then we link to, here's a whole slew of information on English learner stuff that's on this other part of My School Data. So, it's trying to...
By accident, you picked the one thing that is totally inappropriate for a parent to have to search for, which is English language learning. Because if they're, if they're trying to learn English themselves, the last thing we should saddle them with is a complex dashboard. But I, I, I understand the problems and I'm just worried that we're missing the vote on this because parent transparency shouldn't be for the top 30 or 40% of parents. It should be for as much of 100% as we can reach. And I don't feel like we're hitting the bottom 60.
Okay.
And I, I don't know when it's the bottom 50, the bottom 60, the bottom 70, but it's really important that we go there. And I don't know how to help you with that. I wish I did.
Yeah. Thanks.
Pam?
I just wanted to follow up, Eileen, to the department's credit. We have started working on making sure that we reach some of those populations. And Allison and I have been working on, on making sure that we loop back to a group that we met here, with here that can reach a lot of those districts and I think are eager to do so. We just kept hitting the movement and then pause button, but I think that we're about ready to engage more of those areas. And I, we started with some, so, but I, we obviously have, have a lot more work to do as it relates to those groups.
And I, I would still maintain, as I've mentioned last year, that I think just videos, I mean, I'm a more visual learner myself, so if I get overwhelmed by some website, a video that explains how somebody similar to me walks through it, or that, you know, the average person walks through it, or, you know, if they want to see these three things, then this is how you do it. You know, those are, I don't know if they're, we're moving in that direction. I think nonprofits or other community folks could make a quick video in, in the same way as well. So, I, I hope that it'll build more and more.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just have a comment. It would come a long ways from where we started. And you should be very proud of yourselves because this document is truly a seed that blossomed into a beautiful red rose. And we're on the right track. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, thank you Vanessa and Chris for your presentation and also your responsiveness to questions from the board. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item, which is discussion regarding criteria for grant programs. on to our next agenda item, which is discussion regarding criteria for grant programs. And we will begin with Cassandra.
So there's a lot this month. So I have a few comments to make about some of the grants, and then I was hoping to open it up to a larger conversation about the Marshall Plan. So before I do that, let me just say, I asked a couple of questions about a few of the grants, and I just want to kind of be open and transparent about these questions and why I asked them. The first one was on the K-4 Summer Reading Program, which appears to have been written specifically to allow for only one company or one vendor to be eligible for this funding. And I'm assuming maybe the Spanish language program out of Utah was the same. So the Kids Read Now is out of Ohio. It looks like a great program. I mean, it provides summer reading programs for kids, which is wonderful. But the, this section of the bill includes over 10 detailed requirements the recipient must meet in order to be eligible, which basically means there's one vendor available. And so this makes me kind of question what due diligence goes into selecting these vendors. And it appears that it might be a way to get around the RFP process by going through the appropriations process, which is concerning to me because the purchasing process exists for a reason. So that was my first question about that one. The second one, the Competitive First Robotics Grant includes $300,000 that's reserved for non-public schools. And I believe the department has requested an AG opinion on this that says because the $300,000 is from general fund and not school aid, that it is constitutional. Is that correct?
We asked the AG's office about the use of the lawsuit that was filed for using school aid funds for non-public schools. And the lawsuit said that it did not apply to the entire School Aid Act, only to the specific subsection of the School Aid Act. So it does then allow general funds to be used for, to be applied to non-public schools.
Okay, so even though the Constitution says public money shall not be used for this purpose, we're saying in this case, public money may be used for this purpose. Or the AG is saying this?
The AG is.
Okay. So that seems counterintuitive to me, but if that's what the AG is saying. The other one is the kindergarten entry observation grant. This is Phase Two of what was a pilot program that was limited in scope and is now apparently being expanded statewide. However, I have never seen the results of the pilot, and as far as I know, the department has not either.
That is correct.
And so I would request that MDE at least ask Wasna ISD for a report on the results of the pilot program. If the state is now mandating kindergarten entry observations for every child of that age in Michigan, I think we should at least know what we're getting. And then, so, okay, so those are those. And now for the Marshall Plan. I had a number of questions about this. So let me just start by saying, I really thank you to the MDE for providing the grant criteria in a timely manner and your willingness to answer our questions and hopefully get us all to the point where we're comfortable with this. I also understand that the goal is to approve the criteria today so that the grants can be made in December, correct?
We would make the grants available September 1st and then award the funds to the grants in early December, December 1st.
And the applications, accept application September 1st?
Yes.
Okay, not make them available.
Sorry, accept application September 1st.
Got it.
But they have to have their, their group together in order to apply?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. But I also understand that this is not a statutory requirement. This is a, an agreement made with the governor's office, correct?
For the Marshall Plan for Talent.
Right. Okay.
For the other grant criteria, it is a statutory requirement.
Got it. Okay. So we're talking about spending, if I'm looking at this, about $63 million of taxpayer money on this. And so personally, I would rather make sure we get it right as opposed to quick. And so that's why I wanted to open up a conversation today. Particularly, we're talking about something that could fundamentally change how we educate children in the state of Michigan as young as five years old. So I think it's important that we have a clear understanding of what exactly it is. Because I can tell you, the conversations I've had with people up until now, there's a lot of confusion. A lot of people don't quite understand what this is. And there's, there's going to be unintended consequences if expediency is our primary motivator. So let's take a pause and make sure that we understand it as we're moving forward. One of the things that I noticed in this is it really, or at least it's not clear to me, what the expected measures of success are. And I'm not talking about tracking, because I know you guys are setting up a dashboard, you're going to track the metrics. But I don't see what the intent is going into it. Like, what are we expecting to happen? How many kids do we expect to be impacted by this? How many certifications are we anticipating that this is going to lead to? Are there any expectations that exist?
Clear.
Clear expectations, clear metrics in exchange for $63 million?
We do have an expert sitting at the table on the Marshall Plan for Talent that can help us answer these questions, as well as we have an expert on our staff, Wendy Larvik, who's available to help answer questions, and Tyler Sawyer from the governor's office who can help answer these questions. Great.
On the expectations, well, so on the estimate of students impacted, we ran, you know, one, one estimate on the amount of certifications that could, that could possibly be issued under the entire package of the Marshall Plan. And sort of, our guess was about 72,000 credentials. And this could be anything from a welding certificate all the way to a PhD. Now, that was under...
What? I'm sorry, say that again, a PhD?
Sure.
In high school?
Well, no, so the, the Marshall Plan, there's, there's dollars that go to K-12 and that go to community colleges and that go to higher ed.
Okay.
So the dollars hit the entire spectrum.
So I, let me make this a little bit clearer. I'm just talking about the, the grant criteria we're talking about today.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I'd have to go back and look at that one. Yes, I don't, I, I wouldn't know that one particularly offhand. But in any case, that estimate was on a little more structured version of the, of, of the legislation than, than what ended up getting through the legislature. When it comes to the specific criteria, we're really going to be looking for schools to decide what's best for their, you know, for, for what they want to do and what's best for their talent consortium. So you could imagine a talent consortium who wants to, you know, we can think in Grand Rapids, that wants to focus on like some things in the healthcare industry. So you could, there's, you know, a lot of different things that go on in the healthcare industry from, you know, you have nurses all the way up to nurse anesthetists, to surgeons and so on and so forth. And then there's, you know, consortium that might want to just more focus on maybe some of the earlier grades and thinking more about changing the instructional model to incorporate more 21st century skills, which of course is sometimes hard to, hard to measure and pin down. So, you know, it's something that's a little bit new for the state certainly, but we have been calling these innovation grants. And so we're going to be asking the consortia, when they apply, to list what they, what the goals they, they want to be. Obviously, if they live, listen, you know, kind of really sort of squishy goals, then they're not going to look as good on the, on the grant application. But because it is, it's a, it's a new and innovative thing, we're, we're kind of asking the consortium themselves to, what's best for them.
Okay, I'm glad that you're asking them what's best for them, but the grant itself is very prescriptive in that it has to be competency-based education. So, which even, I've been trying to do some research to figure out, is there like an actual real definition of what competency-based education is? And it seems really nebulous to me so far. But I found this organization that they advocate for competency-based education, but even in their materials, as far as last year, or as soon as last year, they acknowledged, and I wrote down the quote here, that it's unproven at this point. And what they said is, and I'm quoting, "There are still limited numbers of exemplars in which high-quality models can describe improvements for students in other stakeholders." So I'm all for innovation, but this, this seems like it's pretty prescriptive. And I'm not sure that this is really as innovative as, as we're making it out to be.
I have personal experience with mastery-based, competency-based learning. My son is in a program and has been for the last two years. His first geometry unit, he chose between five different models for angles. For his unit, he chose between finally, whether or not he was going to be a photographer on a shoot trying to figure out how to do portraits and angles, or whether he was going to be an architect in a high-rise construction project. He chose a world history unit that had him as an undercover CIA agent in post-World War II Russia, as World War II, as, as the wall went up. And we lived that life. So this was visceral for Danny. What I find, he's carrying a 3.65, he got a 98% on the PSAT in ELA. He's scoring fine on standardized tests. It's the same state standards. It's just taught in a way that grips the child. And he has to show before he can go on to the next module that he's mastered and can use 80% or more of the material he's just covered. If he can't, then he has to do more projects. So that, and that's the, that's the glory of mastery-based, competency-based, is that allows teachers to be creative, to address grade-level content expectations in ways that work for children, and they are project-based, hands-on learning. It's not lecture-based, it's not stage on the stage. So there are, Cheryl Stockwell exists in Brighton, has been there for 20 years. There are, you had four school districts coming in, in August, showing you what they're doing with mastery-based, project-based learning. It's not on a, I hear you loud and clear that there's not much on the internet, but Michigan actually has schools in the Upper Peninsula during the Governor's Commission on, on learning. We heard from districts in the Upper Peninsula who were doing this and doing it in elementary school, finding again that their children are discovering based upon the world around them, which is how kids learn best as they're growing up, and scoring well enough on the state assessments as well or higher than they would have before. The difference is that the state assessments do not allow them to show the depth of learning that they've accrued in addition to just the facts. They can't show their underpinning of logic and the discovery sense that they have of owning their own education. It's just a different way of learning. So it has nothing to do with changing the state standards. It has nothing to do right now with changing the state assessments. You couldn't do that until more children are learning this way. And schools are asking for, can we show more depth to show what they've mastered? But in the meantime, learning this way, the difference for me was that Danny's school system had, our local school system, which is very good, has 12 weeks to learn Algebra I. If you get a D minus on it, you're still going to go into Algebra II. And I defy you to get anything besides a D minus or an E on Algebra II if you didn't master Algebra I. This way, you can move through, you can be at, you've got a bar that constantly moves through 13 grades, kindergarten through 12. You can be staggered. You can be way ahead in one subject, slightly behind, catch up, way ahead, you can be, you can be uniform all the way down. But in that 13 years, you're going to master to 80% or beyond. And you'll, and you'll figure it out. And it won't be one of those things where C minus Algebra I, D minus Algebra II, you graduate. You'll actually learn the material and be able to use it. And the promise of this, the potential for it, is so significant for our iPad kids. I don't know how many of you remember Mike Flanagan coming in three years ago, I think it was, and saying, we are, as a society, in a different place. My granddaughter came in, my two-year-old, and walked up to a coffee table book at Christmas time and started trying to swipe the cover and told us the book didn't work. So those children are now in school, and they're in first grade now, I think. I can't remember exactly how long ago that was. But we, this is an effort for districts that want to do it, to address how they learn best and to take the plunge. We already heard from four districts who are doing it, who are engaged and believe it works better for their kids.
Oh, wait, it's voluntary.
No, I understand. There's nothing that prevents schools from doing project-based education now.
Correct.
Right. So this, in my mind, project-based education and competency-based education are not exactly the same. We keep using them like they're synonymous, but they're not. Project-based education makes complete sense to me. I love the idea of doing that. Competency-based education is checking off a box.
No, it's not. You cannot go on to the next part because you won't understand it until you can show. It's not checking off. It is viscerally showing through a project that you can handle the information and use it on something that you didn't, weren't directly instructed in.
So can I share something that I pulled off of this group? So this is International Association K-12 Online Learning. And this is a group that advocates for competency-based education. And they came up with this, this. But what they talked about is personalized education and competency-based education. But their definition of personalized education was, "Learning is tailoring, learning for each student's strengths, needs, and interests, including enabling student voice and choice in what, how, when, and where they learn, to provide flexibility and supports to ensure mastery of the highest standards possible." Which sounds great. But how does a third grader determine what they're going to learn? Like, how, you know, at some point, you have to have foundational levels of understanding in order to apply that knowledge. And that's where I get concerns.
Sandra, you have the state standards, and you have teachers who are soaring at this. Tyler, maybe this is something for you to address. I, I want to get out of the way of teachers and schools who want to do this. Because if they're working with the state standards and the grade-level content expectations, and they're willing to put this together with the examples that are out there. Cheryl Stockwell's been in existence for 19, 20 years. I mean, the other ones are there. It's, we, we as policymakers have to decide whether we're going to restrict or open up. I hear your concerns, but I also see that it's working. And to say that there's inadequate evidence for you to vote for it, I understand that completely. I'm living it. And I love it. And so does my child.
Is it for all children?
Yes.
No, it works for all children?
Yes, that's, that's what Fraser said.
Why is there so many people who disagree and say that competency-based education is the way to get them in front of a computer like EAA was, where you eliminate teachers and you make it all based on computers? You know, I mean, there are, the high-tech Silicon Valleys, Waldorf schools and stuff, they eliminate technology in the iPads and they realize that that is not what's best for the kids.
Cheryl Stockwell doesn't do that. Fraser's not doing it. It's a choice that each school district makes and has the right to make to choose their own curriculum.
But then it's, once they, once they make it, it's for the whole school or whole district.
No, 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 just listen to me. What Fraser said, let me just say this.
According to the grant.
The Fraser, the Fraser board members who were here talked about the fact that they had a system with their, in their school, that when they looked at it analytically, it helped some children, but not very many. When they recognized, and, and they're not talking computer-based instruction, Tom, that's completely separate. This is in-person. They haven't fired teachers to go to computer-based instruction. None of these districts have.
I haven't seen any, I haven't seen any definition. Do they have a definition of competency? Because I mean, you may have experienced a good CVE. Others have not experienced it done well. So I mean, is it possible that it's, it's very undefined?
So I don't find it undefined at all. And I hear, I hear your concerns. And I respect that these voices are being raised and the concerns. As I said today at lunch, that's our job. I can tell you that it exists. It exists well. And there are districts that want to try it and need some support to go there. I think that that's our role. I don't think it's our role to be prescriptive on curriculum. If they want to do it and they are ready to try and they need some assistance, I believe we should do that.
Are we not being prescriptive, though? Because for, one, obviously, there's nothing that stops schools from doing this now, because schools are doing it, right? But we're now saying that in order to get this grant, you have to have two companies and possibly a higher ed in. So isn't that kind of changing curriculum at that point? What is the role of the companies if not curriculum-based?
If the district decides that it wants to attempt this, then they're partnering to make sure that what they're doing works with higher education. That's why they need that partner, nonprofits. And what are, what are the other, the potential partners? Because she has decided that they have to have two businesses and maybe a legislature.
It could be, it could be, it could be other school districts, community organizations.
So there's not a requirement they have to have companies involved?
Uh, yeah, there is. The, the only requirement is that's one school district and at least two businesses, except for smaller rural districts, can have one business.
Right. So what is the role of the business?
It's, it's really that, that partnership. And it's not unlike the way that, that the CTE dollars flow right now already with the CX, where a CAC sort of plays an advisor role to a CTE program, and a business has to sit on that, on... on that CX statutorily. So we kind of took that sort of model that's already in state statute and kind of put it on steroids a little bit by really making everyone work together and list off what they're going to do, how everyone's going to contribute and work together towards the same end.
From the grant side of things, I'd just like to add one comment. The Marshall Plan for Talent does require, for one of the specific buckets of money, the competency base, that all schools shift to either a full school or a full district. It's for that one portion of money. It's not the full 59 million. For the full 59 million, they're asking them to think about some of the concepts of competency-based education and how whatever curriculum they might be including. Because this can pay for existing programs that schools have already done to broaden those, to, for example, Cisco Academy, Microsoft Teles, there are different IT, and using those as specific examples, where this is already happening. The Marshall Plan is asking for entire communities, and in the entire state frankly, to think about how we can focus on the kinds of skills that our kids will need for the jobs that we know are going to be available in the future. You know, I've heard people say, are we allowing businesses to come in and set the curriculum for school districts? That is not the intent of the Marshall Plan. I think the intent is to come together as a consortia and decide what are the needs for that particular area. And it may be that the needs for that area match the needs for a different part of the state, which is why we took off sort of the geographical boundaries of the consortia. If what you need is similar to someone in the UP needs, then you should be able to come together as a consortia and find a solution for that need. And then how can you help get kids the credentials, the skills, whatever it is they might need to make themselves available, if they so choose, for those particular job openings? I think the competency-based full district or full school, we have actually already before this board approved criteria for competency-based grants along those lines. And that money went out earlier this year. And we have those districts right now working, and we've been meeting with them and talking with them closely, and they're very interested and are some, sort of the voluntary perspective for that one piece of the grant, who would like to come forward potentially for additional funds to do that work. There's others who've been watching them and who have said to themselves, maybe we're ready to get there too, and so they're also potentially looking. There's money in the Marshall Plan for Talent for things beyond competency-based education. There's money on the table for career navigators, so that districts can hire career specialists, people to come in and work with students if they want to use that money for school counselors. There's nothing to prevent them from doing that as well. And we, in our guidance, want to say that it's, you know, it should be part of the existing plan for school counseling, whatever new staff you might hire coming in, that needs to be done together. There's money for Talent for Tomorrow. As Tyler mentioned, we are impacting students beyond high school. We potentially have students in post-secondary who are looking to enter training programs, who potentially could access the scholarship and stipend money. Again, that's outside of the grant, but these are the kinds of things that the Marshall Plan was trying to do, to provide that innovation and to try to get some additional money into things that we've been working on for some time, like IT, like healthcare, preparing our kids for some of these fields that we know are out there, that are increasingly getting more credentials, more requirements necessary for kids to do that work.
There was a question on the definition of competence-based learning. The statute does have a, I don't want to say a specific definition of competence-based learning, because we did want to let districts have some flexibilities as to how they go about implementing that and what works for their individual schools and districts. But we do have some of, a few subsections on sort of a definition of competence-based learning. And that definition was pulled almost completely from the statute that resulted in the grants that the board approved earlier this year. So that was kind of pulled from that language, too.
I had a question. So I'm looking over the grant. Some things that kind of concerned me, or a red flag, where it says, "A detailed plan on how curriculum instruction will be changed," this is part of the plan in order to be eligible, "to address the changing employer and talent skilled needs." So it sounds like the curriculum has to be tailored to the employer's needs, and I assume that's the employer in the consortium. So I'm concerned that the shift is away from things like English literature, or more broad knowledge, or to things that, to appease an employer. And that's concerning to not have that, especially when we're talking about K, starting at kindergarten. It doesn't make sense to me to have that degree. And I also think about, you know, the race to the top. In order to be eligible for race to the top, you know, there was all these requirements for change. And, you know, with schools scraping by for money, many of them dangling $200,000 to $500,000 in front of a district superintendent, is pretty tempting. So I'm concerned about that this is going to impact the overall curriculum and narrow the curriculum, and in that this consortium is laser-light focused on employer's needs, not necessarily what the community wants, or what the parents want, or the students want, or the teachers think is best. I don't, I know this is saying, like, this is what the community wants, but it seems to me this consortium is with the administration of the ISD or this district and these employers that are going to dictate, and it's going to be more of a top-down. So that's a concern. And the other is, who is, if kids are going at their own pace, I don't see, I mean, that to me is like computer-based. Because I don't see how else you can implement something that is so tailored and just they're going to learn, who sets the criteria of what is mastery? Who says that you've got it right? And who says what is what you need to know? Where is the room for intellectual and, you know, critical thinking and engaging students in disagreeing and in coming up with different and creative ways of thinking about things if it's, if it's so, you know, prescribed, what is right, this is the right answer, you've got the right answer, you can move on to the next quest thing? It doesn't, so those are my two main, and then also what happens to kids who are different, you know, special ed kids. Are they, you know, how, their needs are all over the map, you know? So, and how will that address their needs? So I just have a lot of red flags all over the place.
I understand. Sheila, with your permission and the board's permission, I'd like to ask Greg Deen to come forward, because I think he might be able to help Michelle with some of her questions.
Greg, please come join us. And Greg, why don't you describe your work with the competency-based education districts?
Sure. I've been working with a number of districts over the last three years on competency-based education, most recently with the 21J Pilot Schools. We have seven districts that are participating. And we actually wrestled with some of these same questions early on, all very good questions. And just to kind of address a couple of them, I think one of the key things is that what we've seen in districts is that it really kind of puts the teacher into the driver's seat. One of our concerns early on as well was that this would be an online program and that we could just kind of put students in it, and that's how they moved at their own pace. When what we're really finding is that the systems that have been implemented that are truly competency-based have allowed the teachers to make those decisions based on the assessments they use in their classrooms, their observations, and then also the things that they do at the building and district level. The other thing that I'm learning more is that districts are already moving in this direction, kind of with or without the extra funding. So it's been nice to share with them some of the legislation, some of the language that we've used around the state, to let them know that they're kind of not in this alone. Some of them felt like they were kind of on an island and figuring some of this out, you know, just amongst themselves. And so we've started to develop a really nice community of implementers that are moving forward with this work anyways. The technology has been used in a very strategic way. I haven't seen any competency-based models, I would consider real competency-based models, that just put students onto a computer and kind of let them move. Instead, what they're doing is leveraging some of the technology so that students have access to content, or so they have maybe more communication with their teacher around some of their assignments and some of the progress that they're making. I guess one other thing that I would add is that the districts that have moved in this direction did it out of necessity, because what they have reported is that they were looking and digging a little deeper on some of their own data around things like student engagement, or, you know, student involvement in school, and whether or not they were really feeling like they were a part of their school and that they were really engaged in the school. And some of them had, like statewide assessment scores that were pretty good. So it was really hard for them to kind of look at that data and realize that they had issues that they maybe didn't realize until they dug deep and had some conversations about it. So they moved in this direction out of necessity, realizing that it's not appropriate to let students progress through the system based just on a chronological age, but that they needed to master content before they moved on to that next kind of level of content. So, I mean, those are just some of the things that have really emerged since we've been working more closely with the districts around this. And I think that, like I said, I think we wrestled with some of these same questions, and we found that competency-based education was really a solution to a lot of the questions that the districts were asking about instruction in general.
I want to add that the statute in the definition of competency-based learning talks about, I think the phrase is, "multiple methods of proving competencies." And so it's, I think, and so I'll use an example of a project that kind of lumps this all into one neat package. And that's that students work together as a team to analyze Amazon reviews, to attempt to kind of figure out which ones are more likely to be fake. And this was, started as a kind of a coding sort of project, but it ended up kind of blossoming into also a statistics project, and it ended up including English language arts, because turns out, according to these students, that if an Amazon review is grammatically perfect, it is more likely to be fake. And so they were able to take this and bring in a whole bunch of, you know, a lot of different skills, academic, but also kind of critical thinking skills into one really great project. And through that, through that one method, they were able to prove, hey, that, you know, they know this part of statistics and this part of coding and this part of English language arts. And the statute kind of specifically asks for those multiple methods, and I think the statute even lists a few of the methods, like public presentations, research papers, mentoring other students as part of that, and, you know, passing a test on a computer is not one of the things in the statute. So if a district were brought to the state, a grant, which kind of, they were sitting students down in front of a computer, it would not align with the statute as passed, and so they would not look as good on the grant process. And it's my opinion that they should not get money to support that type of instructional model.
And to that end, the way we created this grant process, because as the statute requires, we are working with Ted to put together sort of a multi-step. They have to prove they've formed a consortia, so they have to demonstrate they have the partners. Now, the minimum in statute is, as Tyler said earlier, you know, one LEA, or one ISD, and two business partners unless geographically you can't pull two. What we have been talking to districts about over time is the idea of as many partners as you can. So they have to first demonstrate they have put together a consortia, and Ted needs to approve that consortia. So they are going to do that step first. And then once they have proven that they have sufficient partners and that they have ample people at the table to define the need and know what it is that they're moving towards, then they have to create what's called in the statute a talent agreement. And that agreement is where they demonstrate what it is that they intend to do, and what each of the partners, much like our partnership district agreements that we have used for our at-risk schools, what is each partner bringing to the table? What is it that they're going to do to help move this forward? And so that talent agreement will come with a separate sort of mini-application that they'll have to demonstrate, what are each of the partners doing? You've asked for so much money, what are you going to do with that money? There's separate, even though this is a comprehensive grant application, there are separate buckets of funding that you find in the statute. So which buckets is it that you're going to use, and what are you going to use that money for? And then once that is approved, then they get into the competitive grant piece where they're actually applying for the funds. So to your point, Michelle, I'm worried that a business is just going to run in here and create this consortia and put something out for one specific pathway that doesn't really help kids other than that one pathway. What we're hoping to see in the consortia and in that talent agreement is a demonstration of how they're overall creating something that's going to create multiple pathways for as many students as possible. And so as part of that review, we have the ability to kind of take a look, and to Tyler's point, is this really what we were looking for, or is this not, and in that case, perhaps we don't want to? The other thing I just want to mention really quickly, I'm sorry, is that we are doing multiple rounds. So the first round, you said, "I would rather not hurry up, I would want to take some time to deliberate." We're hoping in round one to take those who are ready. If you're not ready, you will be moved to round two or three and asked to think more about, to develop out your plan, to give yourself some more time to figure it out. So I think what we at MDE and Ted have said is, if we're not ready, we're not moving forward with applications for that competitive grant. If we're not seeing what it is that we know in that statute we're looking for, then round two. So we do have some quality measures in place, I guess, as a way of putting it to ensure that what we're giving money out for is the spirit of what's in that statute.
And these are all public documents, right? So they're all foiable?
Yes.
So if they, if the intent is not to have online testing and have to be online, is that going to be part of the application? To make that abundantly clear, that if they do this, they will not get funding?
So they will be demonstrating for us what it is, the program they want to do. So, you know, if they're expanding a program, if they're creating a new program, all of that is part of what needs to be explained in the concept summary and in that talent agreement.
But if the intent of this legislation and the grant is not to have this sort of online education with online testing, then it seems to me the department can make that clear in the application form, the mini, whatever you call it, the mini-application, to state that, that those who, that we will not fund those who are doing online, doing this online education and online testing as a means of competency-based education. So why not just, if that was not the intent, why not just state it?
Well, I would only want to be careful to clarify that since IT is one of the particular areas, there will in fact be some programs that are on a computer, because we are teaching kids the skill of how to work with software, with programming, with those types of pieces. So I don't want to, I don't want to say something that would then make it seem like we're not going to allow for those.
Right, so it's not that saying they can't use online, but that perhaps the evaluation will be based on a teacher's, a certified teacher's assessment, not on a standardized test, that, so that all these things that are being said to sort of reassure us that that's not what this is. So why not just have that be part of the application? Why not it be stated upfront to those applying that this is not what we intend to fund, but we want something that is, and then you said it works best to have the teachers fully involved. I also would say, when it says in this grant, that the consortium has to be with others, like the businesses, the ISD, but that to specifically add or make it clear that teachers' parents must be part of this, the school board must be part of this consortium, not just the business and some representatives from the administration.
I understand what you're saying. What I would say is, is through intent, we have tried to make that clear. I mean, the statute has very clear definition of what a consortium is.
Well, it says, "and others." So it leaves that sort of open.
Right. So we have tried to, through the different guidance and things that, and it's been mostly talk, because until we're there, we're not, there's nothing official that's out there. But our conversations with people have been that very thing, that you should be including all of these people as you're doing this work, and you should be thinking about creating the multiple pathways for students and how that's going to impact.
Why not must? No? Why not, instead of should, which means that you have the option of... Why not, instead of should, which means that you have the option of disregarding it?
Well, it's my hope that no one is disregarding it, I guess, so.
Yeah, but then if you make it clear that, that, you know, priority will be given to those who have an inclusive.
Yes, and I should have mentioned, Kevin's probably giving me the look, that as we have created the process, and Ted has put together the requirements for telling us who your consortia is, and your concept summary, and your talent agreement, there are additional points awarded the more partners you have. So the more people you have shown, the more.
Yeah, but I don't want just all business partners, I want to make sure.
No, 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 community organizations.
Teachers in particular are included.
Right, I think that's guidance that we could include in the application.
I have Dr. Z. Michelle, what are your questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I have Dr. Z, I have Pam, and I have Lupe. And then, back to Tom, and then, and then Cassandra.
Okay, so the, the grants are intended to fund consortia and their programs. How many consortia are we expecting or hoping to, just ballpark figure?
This is one we have no idea. It's, we've structured the consortia, the consortium model to be very, very flexible. It could be, like I said earlier, as small as a single district and a single business. It could be as big as the entire state. I mean, obviously, I don't see the entire state being one.
Okay, so given that, the first year's allotment, does that mean the fewer consortia, the potential, the more money that each one would be able to receive?
No, because the statute has a tiered system and caps the amount that each, that districts, so districts are serving as the fiscal agent, and they are the ones who are applying on behalf of their consortia. And there are, there is a tier within the statute, that if you have so many students, a certain percentage of money and a capped amount of money is what you're able to get. So it isn't, like, I guess, it's not a sliding scale, if we only have 20, then they get all the money. There are caps in place to assure that the money gets spread out.
It's very roughly like a per pupil maximum, very, very roughly.
Okay, so what's the maximum number of pupils we're hoping to serve in the first year?
Oh, theoretically, it could be every people in the state. But, you know, practically, we can imagine that there's, there's only a handful of districts who are sort of in a position to, to get their consortium built, and the partnerships built, and put together a really high-quality grant application. So there are practical matters. I'd be hard pressed to even spitball what that number would be.
And so what's the total amount expected or allotted for the first year?
I think the statute requires that 50% of the funds be expended before June 30th?
June 1st of 2019. We have to spend by statute 50% of the 59.
Awarded, is it awarded?
Yeah, awarded.
Okay. So how many consortia do you need, well, I guess, how many pupils do you need in order to reach that?
Theoretically, you could do it with, hang on a second, so 505, with 10 consortia, if they were big enough. Yeah.
So, which would be roughly 38,000? No, that would have to be?
It depends, the way that the legislature tiered, so that could be 10 districts, but it's 10 consortia, that's kind of the unit. So you could have multiple districts in those consortia.
And is there a thought as to roughly the per pupil amount?
I think it was $500,000 for a consortia with a minimum of 3,800 students, so whatever, 500,000 divided by 3,800 is, that's a very, very rough, rough estimate.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, and then Pam?
So my question, piggybacking off of what Michelle, some of the questions that she had, and mine is, the safeguards in place to make sure that some of the fraudulent behavior that we've seen with cyber schools isn't perpetuated. I mean, I know in SAG-AFTRA, there was just recently a case where there was someone who was just receiving, I mean, where they were enrolling students. So obviously, it sounds like that safeguard would be in place, but there was another where there was the third-party vendor who was inappropriately, because of record-keeping, issuing diplomas to students. So just making sure that some of those safeguards are in place, because obviously, some of the points that are brought out is that while that funding was given to these groups, it could have been given, given to places where there were actually bodies and educators that were there. And I'm all for innovation, but just speaking to some of those issues that we've seen with some of the cyber schools.
Whenever we do competitive grants, we have a set of assurances that those who are applying have to sort of check the box and say, yes, we agree, we agree, we agree. So I would say that some of those sort of safeguards are in place within those assurances to, and there is a report that's due within two years, but we'll be asking for, you know, some additional touchpoints with consortia once they're formed and once grants are awarded. But yes, we will be looking for those types of things.
Pam, are you all set?
Okay, I guess I have a point of order. What is it that we're, the intent of this discussion? Are we going to have a motion, or are we just discussing? What are we doing?
Well, this part of the agenda is a discussion regarding the criteria for the grants, and then later on, we have a motion to vote on the approval of the grant criteria.
By itself, or together with all the others?
Way it stands right now, it would be together with all of them.
Is it appropriate to call the question, or what, how do we terminate discussion? Can we go on and on, or what?
There's no question, there's no vote, there's no motion, no discussion.
I'm asking her.
Right now, we are in the discussion stage of the grant criteria.
May I parlementarily address that? You can ask to return to the orders of the day, and that triggers a vote on the, whether we want to leave this discussion and go to the schedule that we've adopted, or continue to spend time on this issue.
Well, whatever the terminology is, can you repeat that?
Parliamentally, it's call for the orders of the day, which is to simply return to the schedule.
Yeah, I moved for the order of the day.
So I hear a motion by Lupe to return to the order of the day.
I'll support.
And I, we have a support. Is there any discussion?
If there was.
I'm not done.
Yeah, there was someone who have been, you have outlined all of the people who were going to speak.
This is $63 million, it's kind of important.
This is our job, as board members.
So because we have a motion, we have a second, we will vote on it then? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
No.
Roll call.
I think we better do a roll call.
Yes.
Pecto?
Nope.
McMillan?
No.
Pew?
No.
Rama Spontini?
Yes.
Snyder?
Albridge?
No.
Wiser?
Yes.
Siley?
I second, so I have to say yes.
Okay, motion fails, we'll continue the discussion.
Fair enough.
Lupe, was there anything else that you wanted to comment on or add?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, it was said that there, I want to know more about earlier grades, so how do, how does the, this, you know, higher wages competency-based education for higher wages grant, and the requirement that the entire district or school adopt competency-based education principles, how is that going to impact second grade or third grade? I mean, I heard Tyler say 21st century skills, but I'd like to hear something a little more concrete, and I'd rather it not be, let's see what the innovators do. I mean, give me some examples of what you're going to, you know, get a second-grade kid to get ready for a high, high-skilled, high-wage job.
Yeah, so obviously, we're not trying to prepare a second grader for a career, but I do want to separate just a couple of things. You know, we haven't done a very good job of making this, this part clear, but Wendy kind of alluded to it. So we have a set of money, I think it's $4 million set aside, that's pretty much exactly the same as the 21J dollars that Greg was referring to. And these are dollars specifically for a school or school district to convert the entire school to a competency-based instructional model, that is set aside and separate and apart from the sort of broader programmatic grants. The programmatic grants, what we are asking schools to do are to, I think the phrase is, adopt the philosophies of competency-based learning. And so, this phrase was kind of left vague quite intentionally, knowing that it's going to be different for each school, and where they're at, and kind of what parts of competency-based learning they, they sort of want to pick. And we also know from Greg's work that it's a huge process, it takes years sometimes to make this kind of conversion. So some things we might see in the, in the earlier grades, you know, one big part of it would certainly be what Eileen mentioned, which is students who learn at their own pace. So if a student is doing really, really well in math, they, they might, you know, move ahead in math to make sure they're always challenged in that curriculum, whereas in English language arts, maybe they're struggling a little bit, so they'll get more time in English language arts. But, you know, creating this, this sort of individualized instruction, so the student is neither, never bored with the, with the material, and never, never left behind with the material. Another part of competence-based instruction is kind of that project-based approach, and certainly, that type of instructional model, project-based instructional model works very, very well in, in the earlier grades, where, you know, students can learn by doing, you know, those kinds of things. You know, we kind of intentionally left it up to, I know you said not to leave it up to the innovators, Tom, but that's, we, you know, we intentionally wanted schools to be able to adapt the parts of what we're trying to get at that worked best, best for them, knowing that what works, you know, in high school is just not going to work in an elementary school. But there's still a lot of things that we can learn in terms of project-based learning, individualized instruction, multiple methods of proving competency that translate kind of all across the K-12 spectrum.
I mean, y'all do recognize that there are leading thinkers that believe competency-based education has real problems, that, you know, it's, some things are not susceptible to an 80% score, computerized 80% score, and move on to the next light level. British literature, arts, and what some people are seeing across the country is that these are being eliminated, because you can't easily fit them into competency-based education. So what they do is they eliminate these, these classes and these, these subjects. So, you know, I mean, I hope there's an understanding that this is new. It perhaps may be, you know, judged as not very, very helpful. I mean, there's not really any evidence-based, evidence that shows that it helps learning. And so I, you know, to, to get them to say that they have to, and this is the large $40 million, whatever, commit to adopt the principles of competency-based instructional model, when that is still debatable whether it's a good model or not, I, I have trouble with that kind of criteria. I would, I would wonder, is there anything that requires parents, you know, like 50% of the parents, or 50% of the consortium to be made up of parents, or have required local boards to hold a hearing to make sure there's a vote before they submit the application? And, I mean, it is troubling to me that this didn't go through education policy in the, in the legislature. It was stuck in a budget, which, in my years in the legislature, that often you stick things in that you don't want debated, because you're concerned about the debate. You know, I just, you know, I think that maybe if we limited it to ninth through 12th, you know, I think that might be a little bit more appropriate, but I just had problems with that.
So I have a list of some things that, if they were included, I think I would feel more comfortable with this. But I guess, before I even go into those, I need to ask the question, can we add anything to this?
In the past, when we've looked at grant criteria, what we have added is, we've added definitions, we've added clarity around process, but we cannot change the content of the statute that was used to create the criteria.
So, well, why don't I just go ahead and share these things, and then, whether they can go into the grant criteria, or maybe they can go into the application, or if you're not willing to entertain any of them, just let me know.
Or perhaps they could go into a guidance document.
Okay. So first would be, I think you need clearly stated goals and objectives, because it does seem very nebulous to me what, what the expectations are for this large sum of taxpayer money. Two, I think that, similar to what has been said earlier, that parents and members of the community should have a role, particularly in deciding whether their school or district transitions to a competency-based model, and they should be provided balanced information. The grant criteria basically just says, you will, you will provide them benefits. What are the benefits of competency-based education? But I think people need balanced information to make informed decisions. Three, credentials should be awarded by a legitimate accredited entity, and that is not clear in this document. And I asked this question before, could I create Bob's certification? And was told, well, that's not the intent. No, that should be clear. That is not what's going to happen here. If you're going to award certifications, they should actually mean something, and they should lead to something, yeah, that students can actually use. I just think philosophically, that we need to make sure students are not being pigeonholed into occupations, because it's convenient for schools or for companies. So I don't know how you express that, but I think that needs to be clear. I don't understand, and maybe it should be clear, how unexpended funds are utilized. If you, if for some reason, schools decide not to engage in this grant criteria, what happens to all of this money? Maybe that's in legislation, I don't know. And then, that the funds should be prioritized, and I think you said this would be the case, to those that focus on in-person education and not supplanting such with online instruction.
Well, I just really quickly want to address the, I can't cite where it is, but I was under, I believe that there's a thing that says an industry-recognized credential, which is a similar language that we use for our CTE programs, that they can't complete the program without receiving something that fundamentally helps them to get, you know, a good job, you know? Not that we're forcing them into that job, but if they're going to take the time to be a part of a program, it needs to lead to that industry-recognized credential.
And MDE is working with Ted, they actually come with that list of those, of those credentials. The statute gives some guidance, I think, I think it says it has to be a credential that leads to a high-salary, high-demand, high-mobility career.
So I know some, there was concerns, I, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping.
Michelle?
Sorry. That they have a license that's industry-recognized, maybe by Laro or something, and not like a Cisco expert, or like a particular, tied to a particular company, because I think that is not beneficial. I think it's ties, it limits their options.
Yeah, this is a little bit of a gray area. So the Cisco certifications are an industry-recognized credential, that you could work at Amazon, Microsoft, be a Geek Squad agent, you could do a ton, you know, there's millions and millions of openings for a Cisco certification. It's, I don't really know a good, a good, a good comparison. But then, there are, of course, these kind of, you know, Bob's trucking, you know, who can just invent a credential. So this is, I just say that because you're probably going to see Cisco certifications on that, that high-demand list, because there's millions and millions of job, six-figure job openings for Cisco certs.
Might not in five years, but currently.
Yeah. So if a school district comes to competency-based learning, how are the options available for kids that might, IEPs, or the jobs, either, is there going to be consideration of getting them? I mean, not just consideration, but when you look at metrics, and you look at what they're going to do, and you look at their applications, is that, it seems to me it should be a deliberate thought, and, you know, very conscious, and a plan that it is not just picking, cherry-picking their best students, or whatever, whatever students, but they're actually having meaningful results for others. And again, I- And again, I, you know, so many of the skills that I look for as a parent of special needs children have nothing to do with getting high-paid jobs. That would be nice, but that's, you know, there's a lot of other considerations as well, like learning to tie your.
So I want to give Greg the opportunity to talk about what we know districts are doing now, but within the talent agreement application, there is a question that we added based on a concern that MDE, we know you, many people have about equity. And what are we doing to ensure that as they're writing this talent agreement, they're considering all types of students? But I do want to let Greg talk about his experience with the districts who are doing this work.
Sure, thank you. I think this is where the intersection with personalized learning kind of takes shape. You know, when you look at students that have IEPs or that don't, but have different learning styles, or that, you know, have certain interests. Some of the promise we've seen is that there's a real emphasis on student choice and that progression of students moving through the system, being kind of that partner in their learning. It does change the role of the teacher a little bit. It doesn't mean that they don't have any of the content knowledge, but it also includes the teacher and the student as kind of partners in learning. So the beauty of it is that you're kind of meeting students where they are, helping them through while delivering instruction, but also knowing that they might take a different avenue to learn the content in a different way than another student is. The goal being that overall career and college readiness. I think the other benefit for specific student populations is in the reporting. Right now, on a transcript, you'll probably see the name of a course and a grade, a letter grade. But you don't really have a lot of information about what the student knows and what they can do in that report. In a competency-based report, you can actually see what it is that the student has done, what skills they have, what knowledge they have. Ideally, I think we would get to a point where you could even see how they demonstrated that, what evidence they may have provided, those kinds of things. So I think it helps because it individualizes the instruction for students, and then you can start to report out those things on a more individual basis for the students. So the districts that we've been working with have seen promise in that, and some, I think, was even unintended, because the role of the teacher changing allowed them to spend more time with individual students when they needed it.
See, they go to a different, I mean, all I can think of is it's going to be an online program. I don't see, so the role of the teacher changes. I'm trying to think, in a classroom setting, where you say it's best if driven by the teacher and a relationship with the teacher, but yet the relationship with the teacher is going to change and they're going to shift to something else. It just seems very vague to me. I need it to be in more concrete terms, because my mind is just like, oh, we'll teach him this, and then he'll do this stuff online by himself, and then I'll go to work with these other students, and then he can go at his own pace on this computer program. Tell me I'm wrong.
No, it's a good question. So let's say teacher has zero technology other than maybe a pencil and some paper. So within your classroom, you know where students are. You're constantly doing assessments, you know what content they know and how well they know it. So you can start to group students, maybe on a certain project that are working on something. You could have students that are working independently on something that they need to focus on, and then maybe you're spending time with an individual student kind of more intensively. And then as students move through the system, you can regroup into small groups. You can allow students to work individually on something that's an assignment, that is a focus on their strengths, but also what they need to really concentrate on and learn more of. So it's not that you necessarily even have to use the technology, it's just a different structure to your classroom. Thank you for nodding, because I'm nervous, I got an expert teacher here next to me and I'm talking instruction. But it doesn't have to be based on the technology. I mean, there are situations where I think the technology is helpful for those kinds of things, but it really is just about grouping the students, individualizing the instruction, and letting students move at their own pace, even with your own, within your own classroom.
How would you recommend the larger class sizes be? Have all this individualized stuff, you can't have a huge.
Well, I mean, we-
Are there any recommendations in competency-based learning of what a class size should be?
I don't know about class size, but we have some examples of what teachers are doing around this. I don't know that there's any research that would identify a certain class size that's ideal for this.
Class size does make an impact on that.
Yeah. But I mean, there are examples out there of how teachers are doing this without technology. But very good question, thank you.
So I have Dr. Z, please, and then Tom, Michelle, or Tom, Cassandra?
I'm done.
Michelle, you're done.
Yeah.
I'm doing some math, which is dangerous to do in public. But I figure it, roughly a million and a half students into the $33.5 million grant, that's, if every student were involved in this grant, we'd end up with 22, 25 bucks per pupil. The 3,800 who qualify, students involved in a consortium who qualifies for the 500,000, that's 134, maybe 135 bucks per pupil. And that helps me to see this, I guess, in scale. This is not as big as I had initially thought. And I'm looking on page three of these other grants, we got six that are larger. And I guess I'm inclined to just say this is, it's an experiment, and I hope it turns out well. They've already earmarked the money, so I think, I just think that we need, if we think of it in terms of program, it's 135 bucks per pupil or so, it's not quite as large as we maybe is, as we had initially thought.
Thank you, Dr. Z. Tom?
Getting back to your conversation with Michelle, so these self-paced personalized, you know, the teachers are going around, and there's groups here and groups there, and some are individual. But as far as showing mastery, how, doesn't, isn't that usually done via computer?
I mean, it would depend on the district, but not necessarily. I mean, I think in the system, you should have teachers determining mastery.
I mean, when I visited the EAA, I remember that they had big banks of computers, and it was very focused on computers. And they had what you talked about, you'd go into class, and they'd have six kids here later, you know, and they had, they talked about it individualized, but in the end, they were focused on showing the computer that they've mastered something and can move on.
Yeah, I haven't seen that in any of the districts that I've worked with. In my mind, I mean, I wouldn't consider that to be a competitive model or one that I think would benefit students. I think that technology definitely has its place, but I think that you still need a teacher to work with the student through their learning process and determine whether or not they're proficient in the content.
And how do you do competency-based education for British literature, or arts, or physical education, or?
I mean, this is where I think the magic of the teacher starts to present itself and how locals have integrated content across some of these areas. It's not a Michigan example, but there's a school where the students actually use multiple content areas to build their own musical instruments with the content involved in, you know, science, mathematics, those kinds of things, and then learn how to play those instruments. I think that when we demonstrate things in the workforce, we use multiple content areas. I think that the real promising models will demonstrate that in even the earlier grades, where you are doing projects that involve science, social studies, and perhaps even literature together, so that experience is real for students.
I've learned that they just eliminate the classes. I mean, that's what I'm learning from things that I'm reading and understanding, so, and people that have concerns about it.
Okay, yeah, and I would, yeah, I would say, I haven't seen that in the models that have emerged so far. So I'm not saying that doesn't happen, but I think in the seven districts that we've been working with through the 21J pilots, they haven't done that. They reckon, and their communities are very vocal about the fact that they want their students to still be involved in the arts and to know the literature and all those other things. But it is a legitimate question, we just haven't, that's not what's been demonstrated by the pilot district so far.
Just very briefly, explain, how much choice do students have? So if I'm in 10th grade, can I choose not to learn the civil rights movement? How does that, explain to me how, because if you're making a choice to really delve into one area, then something else is getting lost. So how does that work?
This goes back to our definition of personalized learning, which we have, because it does involve student choice. And really, it's, if you think about like a location on a map that all students have to get to, which is that career and college-ready place, like everybody kind of takes a different road. Some might take the expressway, some might take some side streets, but you still have to end up at the same place. You still have to be ready to enter employment and earn a self-sustaining wage, or go into some kind of post-secondary opportunity without the need for remediation. So I think, again, that's where the district, the school, and especially the teacher work with the student to find out what their interests are around certain content areas. If you don't necessarily like mathematics, but you do like robots, then how do we figure out what content is in a robotics program or within, you know, an experience you might do with the DNR during the summer, what kind of science is in there? So I think there are ways to kind of pull content out of experiences that students have, teachers really eliciting that interest that the students have, building on their strengths and those kinds of things. There's not a, there's not like one definition, because it really depends on the student. And it's not a free-for-all. So like you said, a student just can't choose to not learn mathematics, for example. We just need to, I think, as an education system, figure out how that makes sense for that student, and how do we engage students? I mean, that's part of the process as well.
Students can't not learn a subject because the subjects are in the state standards, the content's in the state standards. And there's, in the statutory definition of competency-based learning, it talks about that districts still have to utilize the content in the state standard. So the civil rights movement being in the state standards would be something that districts would absolutely have to still include.
Any additional comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd like to thank the board for their very thoughtful and intentional questions. I'd like to thank Greg, Wendy, and Tyler for being so responsive to the questions and comments from the board. And I'd like to thank all of the MDE staff who played a role in getting the criteria onto the agenda for today's meeting. Great job, everyone, thank you. And moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of June 12, 2018. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of June 12, 2018?
Don't move.
Moved by Lupe, supported by Eileen. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, was it Nikki?
No.
I'm sorry.
No matter.
I thought I-
I said it, y'all said it.
The voices are so similar. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And report to my co-presidents.
I have no report.
I have a couple points here, but let me see if I can find them. First of all, I just want to thank everyone who attended the dedication for Brian Wiston at the Fountain this week. That was a really nice event, and I'm sure his family is very, very pleased. A couple things, I, Michelle, Tom and I met with some teachers to discuss teacher and staff evaluations, and I know that the law is now moving into the, I believe, 40% is now going to be on assessments. And there's some real concern from teachers that they were, they expressed, in fact, one of them even said, "I'm done," which I think is probably not what we want for-
Leaving, she was leaving.
Yeah, she was, she was gone. She was just, "I quit, I'm done." And this is, I think this is going to have a really detrimental impact. And so I think at a future board meeting, we really, if we can take a, maybe do a presentation, really take a look at what the teacher evaluation system looks like now, because it's been a while since we've had this conversation, and maybe look at some advocacy that we might be able to do to help ensure that good teachers are not leaving the profession because of what might be not a great assessment tool.
These are the standardized assessments.
Yeah, and then it goes into the evaluation, which is the problem, and I'm looking at you. You probably are fully aware of this, so, so something to think about in the future. Real quickly, I did a WDET interview regarding the social studies standards, actually did a couple interviews, and actually, I attended the Detroit Urban Summit that was hosted by Wayne County Community College on June 29, and it was, it was very interesting and something that, very eye-opening, let's just say that. That's it.
Thank you, Cassandra, and back to Dr. Z.
It turns out I do have report. At the last meeting, I asked if there were a member of the board that would represent the state board on the upcoming Special Education Advisory Committee, and Michelle has volunteered to do that, so I want to thank you for taking that responsibility on our behalf. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Report from the interim state superintendent. I just have a couple of things that I'd like to highlight, things that we've been working on this summer. As you heard me say, when I took on the position of interim state superintendent, I shared with you my priorities and my eight Cs. And one of my Cs was to continue to improve communication and to help with communication. We have created an internal, we've created an internal directory. This was developed collaboratively by all of the divisions within the department. It'll be easy, we believe that this will be a good tool for the field in attempting to contact and knowing who to contact in the department. So we are sharing this with you, and we are also going to post it on our website. So it is divided by each of the divisions within the department. It has the deputy superintendent, contact information, each of the different offices within each division, the director and/or assistant director, content information, contact information, as well as a brief listing of the responsibilities within each of the offices.
Very helpful, thank you.
I will share your thank you with the cabinet when we meet tomorrow, so thank you for the feedback. Just a couple of other things, I've hosted six meet and greet sessions with MDE staff, having an opportunity for them to get to know me and for me to get to know them, and they've been very well attended, and I've enjoyed my conversations with MDE staff. I've also attended and presented at a number of summer education conferences, including the Middle Cities Education Association, the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, the Michigan Association of Intermediate School Administrators, the Ed Alliance Summer Retreat that I was at this weekend, came back yesterday. The conference is still going on, but I came back so I could spend the day with you. The Council of Chief State School Officers, their summer leadership conference, and then the Michigan Co-op Summer Conference. I've also had an opportunity to meet a couple of times with the governor, as well as some of our state legislators. So I just wanted to share a few of those highlights with you. And next item on our agenda today is a discussion on the state superintendent search, and I'm going to turn this to our co-presidents, Dr. Z and Cassandra.
Just passing around a packet of information that we are still within our timeline. So we have identified the criteria for the RFP, which we are sharing with you now, as well as a list of potential firms that do state superintendent searches that we can, the state can reach out to, and the current job description. And I believe we've sent the job description to Ed Alliance, correct?
We did, I met with Ed Alliance yesterday, and the only feedback that I received from them was on the bottom of the first page, the personal trait, the last bullet. Their suggestion was that we reword this to be more positive rather than not opposed to labor.
That's a good idea.
Something along the line of works collaboratively with all groups. The question was why we specifically- specifically, so I'm on the Michigan State Superintendent Job Description page, the bottom of the first page.
Oh, okay.
Sorry if I talked too quickly.
Page three.
Yes.
Page three. Bottom left. Okay, got it.
So their suggestion was that we word it, something along the lines of works collaboratively with a variety of different groups. They were wondering why labor specifically was singled, and why we wouldn't include a variety of different groups rather than just focusing on labor, because there's community members, there's chambers of commerce, there's legislators. So I promised them that I would bring their input to you. That was the only item that they offered feedback on.
I still do not know what you're.
I'm sorry.
The last document.
So the first document is the timeline. And the second document that you have in your packet is the criteria for the vendor. Okay. The third is then the possibly recommended superintendent search. And then the last one is the job description for the state superintendent. And it's on the bottom of the first page, of the state superintendent job description.
Which paradoxically is labeled page three.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
That's all I have to know. Page three.
Page three, which really isn't page three. It just numbered page three.
Second page.
Second page to the last, that's to the page.
The second page, three.
I'm bilingual, remember. Just speak to me very clearly. Now, I have a question. So we have selected the search committee?
No.
I mean, the, the company?
No, what we did was, we have listed some of the search firms that once we have created the RFP, we will send it to them as well as post it on our website.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
And these recommendations, some of them came from the organizations themselves, such as MASB and NASB, as well as, we did a little research our own on search firms. And then we looked at the search firms that submitted proposals the last time we did a superintendent search.
So it looks like, based on this, that we can, unless there are any changes today to the RFP criteria, we can ask the state to begin sending this to firms for response.
So what we will do is, once you give the approval, we will work with DTMB to create the RFP, and then send the RFP out to the search firms as well as post it on our website.
Can we make a motion then?
Yep.
Yes.
What specific action would you request?
Moved that the state board of education approved, approved the superintendent search criteria and the superintendent job description.
Actually, the job description, I believe, is going out for public comment. And we approve that next.
Thank you. Let me go back to the timeline. So we are only looking at the search firm criteria. Moved that the board of education approved the state superintendent search criteria to be used to create an RFP that will be.
That's the pages one and two that we have here.
That we will use to send to potential search firms as well as post on our state website.
So moved?
For sig.
All right. Discussion, discussion?
I would just add under A, remove date XXX, replace it with November 2018, and then with the target completion date of April 1st.
That will be in keeping with our timeline.
We accept that as a friendly amendment? No objection?
Just a putting amendment.
Including the amendment to change the dates in A.
Yes.
And we have a motion, and we have a second, we have discussion, we have an amendment. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you for that. We will get working on that immediately.
Then can I move that we put the state superintendent job description draft out for public comment, maybe put it on our website with the change that was recommended?
And would we like to have a date by which we will have that available, and a closure date, a beginning and end date?
I, so our role is to approve it at the September board meeting, which I believe is September 11. So could we say September, the first week in September?
So how about the Tuesday after Labor Day?
Okay.
Okay.
What's that date?
My friends with the calendar here, with their phones or their iPads. Is that the sixth or seventh?
Four is the, four.
Four. Okay.
The board meeting is the week after.
And the board meeting is the week after. And we will ensure that we send you all of the comments prior to the board meeting.
I second Cassandra's motion.
Okay. Thank you. All, any, any additional discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Sorry. Any objections? Motion carries. All right. So I believe we are meeting our timeline?
Very good.
Okay. And moving on to state, the next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative, legislative updates. Our legislature has been on break. And the state board of education legislative committee has not met. Therefore, Marty Ackley, the director of public and government affairs, does not have an update for us today. But.
In the interest of time.
In the interest of time.
Thank you.
But Lupe, you do have a delegate assembly packet to discuss with the board for the, for their annual conference.
For NASB.
NASB's annual conference, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. There's a few things that we're going to talk about, but very quickly, no discussion is allowed. No. This is, this is just a few little things that we have to do. Okay. NASB changed a few items on their bylaws. One that I'm very happy about is the chairperson is not going to be called chairman anymore, because they were calling even a female a chairman, and that's antiquated a long time ago. And then we're gonna, we have two directors for each district, each region, but now we're proposing only one director per region. And this is based on financial difficulties. And then the size of the board, it was too large to get a lot of things done, too much discussion. So we were there days and days. So those are the kind of things that, that were changing. They're not major, major things. So that's one. And then the next one is that we're still with two directors. So I'm one of the directors for the central, and we're electing the second one. Now, there's two people that are running, and one of them is the one that sits, that serves with me now. His name is Victor. And so I'm recommending to, to the board that we support Victor Lance, Dr. Victor Lance.
Someone.
From Zura.
Call the motion.
Yes, that's fine, that's fine. All in favor say aye. Yeah. And Maureen Nichols. I don't, I don't know Maureen. But anyway, Victor, I really recommend Victor to you because he, he works very hard. He has been on the, this board for a long time, he serves in very special committees, and, and he's, he's a good person. So if it's okay, we'll recommend Victor.
Do we need a motion for this?
Probably.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Well, you want to vote on the NASB bylaw?
If you ask.
Okay. Okay. So move.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Okay. And then the last and final piece of information is the designation of the voting delegate. As your delegate to NASB and, and central zone director, I am going to propose that I be the voting delegate. And Richard has accepted, if something happens to me, then he will be the, the person to take my place, the alternate. So, so then Marilyn will take care of that. And I entertain a motion. You want to entertain a motion to accept me and Richard?
To accept Lupe and Dr. Z as.
Voting delegates.
As voting delegates.
Moved and supported.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? Opposed, say nay. Motion, hearing none, motion carries.
Okay. Another little piece of information is that the executive director, Kristen, which is a doctor, Dr. Kristen Emmonson, is retiring as of December. So Robert Hall, who is the executive vice president, is the interim director, executive director. He's very, very good. Very nice person. Okay. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Eileen, do we have a report on the education commission of the state?
No, we met, I can't remember what it was, last month.
It was longer than that ago.
Longer than that. Well, oh, it was April, end of April, first part of May. Really incredible conference. There's more materials on the website. And at some point, I think I'll pull out a few articles and send them out. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. May I please?
We, we moved that off the consent.
Yeah, we moved it off.
We have to move it back on.
Well.
No, it's on, it's in P14, discussion action items.
Yeah.
We moved it to that.
Sorry. Thank you. Okay. So that is the next discussion item. Did I miss that? I didn't miss that. No, no, it's next. Okay.
You're good. We're up to it right now.
Sorry.
So it's still within.
It's still P. It's just under, not under consent agenda.
Not under consent agenda.
It's extracted.
Okay.
So, so, I have a question.
So I moved to accept the consent agenda without, what number was it?
We already did that. That was part of the agenda.
Oh, okay. So then we all approved all that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we only have to approve the one?
Yeah. My question is, do we do them all at the same time, or if we want to pull one out and vote on it separately, just in case? I don't know.
There could be a vote for everything except the last one.
Yeah. Just, just, I don't want it, everything to go down if, for some reason.
That would be easier.
So then, what I hear you say is that we are making a motion.
My legalist has gotten the radio.
To approve all of the criteria listed except for the criteria for section 297 Marshall Plan for Talent Competitive Grants. Is that what I hear? We're pulling that one separate?
Yeah, that's what I had motion, I had made the motion on.
Okay.
Starting with the Flint Declaration of Emergency Grants and ending with kindergarten.
Criteria for section, yes.
Kindergarten entry observation tool.
Going through then. So we have a motion. Lupe had some motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next is criteria for section 297. That's the Marshall Plan for Talent Competitive Grants. Do I have a motion to approve?
We have to make a, so move.
Support.
Okay. I have a motion. I have support. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I do. Sorry.
It's okay. I just wanted to, I had talked about a number of things that I would feel more comfortable with. And I didn't really get hear a response on whether or not those things would be considered or even maybe in the application.
So I, the, from what I know of both the program and the, the, both the Marshall Plan program and the schools that I've seen this in, they seemed coherent to me. Whether or not they can be included in something, I don't know. The, the only, I've never seen an in-person project-based mastery learning program that's assessed by computer. I think that, I'm hearing more and more that we're referring to the EAA and a computer-based online learning system that, that did that, too.
But I think you're confusing me with Michelle.
No, no, I'm just saying from both Tom and Michelle.
Okay.
And I'm just saying that when you have face-to-face teachers, you assess in projects face-to-face. So. Project-based is not the same as competency-based.
My, my last point was not to supplant the teacher.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I, I, it seemed consistent with me.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking for an answer on whether or not that would even be considered. Because it would make me feel much better about voting for it if I knew that things like clearly stated goals and objectives were part of the application process.
And there was some discussion from the department on that. And I totally defer to the department on, it's your.
Which I do, too, because I don't, I don't know how that works.
And I spoke with Wendy, and Wendy said we would definitely put these in our guidance documents that would go along with the application. Thank you.
For me, the assurance that the, you know, it'll be a consortium where parents and teachers will be part of that consortium, I would say the president of the teachers union is.
Yes. We, we have that. Yes. Yeah.
That was one of the ones that Cassandra mentioned. So in the guidance.
Right. Okay.
Well, I guess, to be clear, though, you, you might provide guidance, but you can't change the criteria.
That's correct.
That'll still, I mean, it's not going to be a criteria requirement that they not supplant teachers with online instruction, right?
We can't put it into the criteria.
But you are evaluating.
But we are evaluating each of the applications and approving each of the applications. We actually have a pre-application process that has to be met before the consortium would go into the full application.
And you would be following the guidelines.
Yes.
When approving or not approving.
Yes.
I could, we also discussed having.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That would be.
Computers don't teach. Teachers teach.
But I have concerns with the.
Little editorializing there.
I have concerns with the composition of these consortiums, that parents, you know, there's not criteria requiring significant parental involvement. The innovative partnerships with employers, I, I think it's very murky as, as to which employers and what that role is going to be. I am not sure, you know, I heard that it was a gray area about elementary being involved with the largest, the $39 million, $37 million competency-based instruction for high-demand fields. I'd feel much better if it was the nine through 12 that we were talking about. You know, the commitment that, that is required under the larger one, the larger grant, to commit to adopt the principles of competency-based educational model for the whole district or the whole school is problematic to me. I feel that we're asking them to commit to something that could be very problematic and, and, and have negative consequences. And, so I mean, I, I need to vote no. vote no.
Any other discussion? Eileen?
I just like to point out that this is still subject to school boards, to local school boards. In any district that put together something with outsiders without involving its community members wouldn't have that same school board for very long or that same superintendent. So I, I, I think I, you know, as I listen to the comments that Cassandra reflected on, we're not that far apart. I've seen good things and you folks are afraid of bad things that you've either seen or read about. I hear that. But this is still a local-controlled state, so you're not going to do this if your parents don't want to have it happen.
And Michelle?
I also just wanted to go on record as saying that the role of the board is to set policy. And my understanding is that's also to be, to set criteria and that's set in the constitution and it's supported by the executive order, which the Board of our State affirmed. And it specifically provides that the board shall retain its statutory, statutory policymaking powers, duties, functions, and responsibilities. And this was after Governor Angler shifted administrative duties to the superintendent. So I question the role of the legislature in setting criteria and policy for education as, as about, you know, as infringing on the constitutionally established and affirmed role of the board. And I understand that they can control the purse strings, but it seems to me that this is an infringement on our role where they didn't deliberate it, they stuck it in a budget, it wasn't talked about. It's a ton of money, of taxpayer money. And I think it would have been better served to have it be fully deliberated and have public comment on it instead of feeling like it's being thrust on us regardless of how we vote. I have, I have real concerns with that. For that reason, I'm voting no.
Sheila, let me just add also that the uncertainty of what, how to define competency-based education, I'm concerned about how this is going to roll out and that it's just very unclear. I mean, I, even from the experts, he talked to the gentleman who was at the end of the table, said real competency-based models that he's seen, well, that implies there's some unreal ones. I think it's very nebulous. You know, again, we don't know what the goals are, the end goals, it's very nebulous. And it's a lot of money. And so I, I, there may be some good models of CBE, but I, I would, that may not, you know, may not apply to all the kids in a school or a district that'll be required to do this if they, if they, if this is given to them, so.
Thank you, Tom. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none? Sorry, Pam?
I'm going to ask this one more time. So the action steps that you, you initially suggested, there's no way that those can come before we move to a vote?
That'd mean creating a guidance document. So if you're voting on them today, no, except, we can't give you the guidance document today except to take our assurance that we will put them in the guidance document that we create for the application process.
Is that because there's gray area still yet in terms of whether or not the State Board of Ed sets criteria or the legislature sets?
It's because what's the criteria that's in the grants are set statutorily. And we use what's in the statute to create the criteria. And the only time that we have made modifications to the criteria is for clarity of a definition or clarity of process. And we went back and looked at all past board meetings and there's never been a time when the board hasn't approved grant criteria.
Like we're seeing a new spirit or a new relationship between State Board of Ed and legislature that maybe needs to be improved.
I agree.
So I think the noes here today quite possibly have that underpining even if we haven't.
So if this is voted down, then what's next step?
That's a good question.
They give the six million dollars back and let the governor spend it however he wants.
One of the things we could do, one of the things we could do is contact the AG's office for guidance on next steps.
But if I'm hearing you correctly, because this is in statute, we really have no flexibility.
You don't have such flexibility on the criteria that's in the grant application.
But we definitely have flexibility on the guidelines. So we could request that you bring the guidelines before the State Board of Education?
Yes.
For the legislature? The guidelines before the legislature? No, the guidelines that MDE is going to come up with? Okay, yes.
Guidance and guidelines.
Guidance, guidance on, it would be a guidance document for completing the application.
That's where we have.
Beverage.
And that would delay then the grants from being available to apply. So they would, the consortiums wouldn't be able to apply until you approved the guidance documents would then would delay by a month.
How, how serious is that? How many people would be upset or how would that affect people's lives?
Well, we know that there are some districts, consortiums, they've already created their consortiums and they are ready to, they're getting ready to apply.
As we mentioned, the consent, the concept summary and the talent agreement, those are ready to go. And like many of the times that you approve grant criteria, it opens up the next day. We were prepared for that step, so.
I, I don't understand why it would delay you putting the application out because the guidance is an internal document that you would use to evaluate applications.
Typically, we share that guidance so that the, if you're applying, you know upfront what you're being evaluated on. It's, it's like having a rubric for evaluating a task. If you're going to apply for a grant, you'd like to know, here are the criteria that, here's the rubric that I'm going to be evaluated on whether, whether it's my grant's going to be accepted or not, approved or not.
Do you think some of the school districts have already created an application?
I talked to them.
Maybe they just submit it. Well, personally, I'm willing to vote yes as long as we have a guidance document that we have influence over and.
I called a question.
Yes, do you call the question? Okay. So we go back to the motion, which is to approve.
Hold on, I called a question.
Okay, sorry, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So motion carries. Unless we, unless we need to do a roll call?
It would only be if we challenged.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so now we actually vote on the agenda item. Thank you. Every time I lead one of these board meetings, I grow more and more dendrites from my learning experiences. So thank you, thank you for tolerating me as I'm learning this. Okay, so we have a motion. No, I need a motion. I have a motion, was that by?
What are we motioning here?
Lupe, I have a motion. Yes, we had the discussion, we had, they called the question, we voted on that, it passed. And so now I'm, we are voting on the motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, probably should do a roll call.
Yeah.
Fecto? McMillan?
No.
Pew?
No.
Ramos Fontini?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Albridge?
Yes.
Wiser?
Yes.
Zylee?
Yes.
Or four?
Four, five.
Doesn't pass.
So next steps in the process is I will call the AG's office and ask for guidance on how to, how to proceed next. And then I'll communicate that with you.
And if the legislature wants to get back together and change the criteria and work with us, we're open to that too.
Tom, is that what you used to do?
Things are changing.
We all grow with experience.
You were harder than a rock, Tom.
Thank you.
Are there any board members who wish to offer comments at this point?
Well, I.
Yes, Lupe?
I, I'd just like to echo what Michelle was talking about evaluations because I did talk to a president of a district in my area and that's a great concern. And I don't know what the department can do with that evaluation piece that's, because it is causing too many problems with the teaching staff. And, and you have the morale so low, you're going to start a new year, I don't know how they can teach children because they don't feel good about, they're already all worried. It's just not a good situation. So I don't know what we can do, but whatever we can do, we should do. Sooner, better than later.
Tom?
To bring up an interesting topic, these social study sessions, I'll just say that I, and they're fine, I, I saw a video, a couple of videos that seem to indicate that the MDE people who were leading it were quite biased and quite piling on to legislators and, you know, just, I'm hoping that they, I hope that's not what I saw or that they were not some of the presenters or people facilitating it. But I would assume that they would be unbiased. Hopefully, they would just be presenting information, letting, you know, gathering information, but not being pretty, piling on and, you know, pretty aggressive in saying how horrible some of these things are.
I'm sorry, Tom, did you say that you were at the session?
No, I saw videos.
Okay.
So I.
And those, they were MDE staff members?
No, I don't know. I mean, that's what it looked like. They were, it looked like they were presenters. They were not people giving comment. So I don't know exactly if there was, in some instances, non-MDE presenting and getting the feedback or information, but it seemed, it looked like that from what I saw. I looked at, I had a few other people looking at some of the, the two experts that were claimed to be phonics experts in the K six that we dealt with that are going out. And, you know, the two that, you know, we did some, or some research has been done the last few hours as far as one of them at OU is involved with a reading recovery that's questionable if it's all that good and it's certainly not phonics-focused. And the other, I read a couple of articles briefly and I saw nothing that indicated phonics. She was talking about things that should be eliminated or things that are problems, but I mean, there was no interest in phonics. So I'm still trying to determine how phonics, you know, maybe there needs to be other experts in phonics who evaluate these. And I know there'll be given public comments, so they can give it at that point.
Plenty of opportunities.
And then I'll, finally, this discussion and some of the discussion with the Marshall Plan or anything, really, I think there needs to be a hard, a strong debate about the purpose of public education. Because I've said it before, it's not to get people jobs, it's not to fill the needs of businesses that are in this, in an area. It's, you know, I mean, we really need to talk about what really is the purpose, you know, creating a, you know, helping to build up a, a good citizen who, who knows, I mean, people like Lou Glazer would say, you don't know what the jobs are going to be in the near future or, you know, you know, you need to have them very flexible, make sure you're not narrowing education but expanding and making sure that they have a lot of options and stuff. And so I think there, maybe that might be helpful at some point to really debate the purpose of, make sure we look at what is the purpose of public education. That's all.
Thank you.
I just wanted to also talk about the teachers that we met in Southfield. And we spoke about the Teacher eval system. There were a lot of special education teachers who said that the, the way that they were evaluated, sometimes they were given the, the aggregate score of the school. They were, came up with all kinds of schemes of how it was just not being implemented in a way that was fair. And it's not just the test scores. People who were not liked by the principal were graded harshly even though they made, one woman who said she had quit, she'd come from a state where she'd been rated very well and then now she came here and she was like minimally effective and she signed the same teacher, doing the same things. It, it, it just seemed like these folks were just really, they were counting the days to retirement. They, a couple of them, there was a gentleman who also quit. And then there's one woman, it was a faculty member who was one of her best students. She was trying to convince this other special ed, this other teacher not to quit. And she said, I just can't take it. Arbitrariness and unfairness and the stress of it. So I, I've, you know, it just sort of reaffirms to me that it's bad policy and it's been thrust on us and, and it needs to be revisited and it needs to be corrected, so.
So I would actually recommend, because I think all these are great ideas, that maybe the legislative committee needs to come up with a list of things that we want to advocate for. Particularly, we have a whole new crop of legislators coming in after the first of the year. Maybe that's a great opportunity for us to pull them together, educate them on what these issues are and see if we can't impact some of this.
Meet and greet.
Right, yeah. But I'm, I'm actually talking about like longer-term issues we can advocate on behalf of specifically.
Yeah, usually we don't have an agenda like that.
Right.
Yeah?
So, and I, and I know, I always feel, I won't apologize, but I always feel that it's imperative that we, we at least address some of the issues that are brought to us by the people who come to the table. Unfortunately, they don't get to hear us do that. But as it relates to the social, social study standards, I did end up going to, at least, I went to three of the sessions. And I will have to say that I was really impressed by the way the MDE were, was able to, as well as the consultants, were able to maneuver those conversations. And then I went to Flint, I went to Saginaw, and then I went to, what's the bigger, I can't remember, the one right after, it wasn't Oakland County, maybe it was Oakland County.
Yeah, you were in Oakland.
So that's right, because you couldn't make it. So, and the crowds grew, but the way that they were able to maneuver those crowds. And I really am happy that they were able to, right away, recognize that there needed to be a pause in, in that discussion. I know that as board members, we were able to emphasize that we were in no rush, but I was able, I was happy that, that the department stepped up right away and, and recognized that as well. One of the things, obviously, that comes out of that is that as we bring groups together and we've talked about this at different, whether it's the dashboard or whether it's the presentation that we did on, on, on early childhood.
Elementary teacher preparation standards?
How we are engaging community. I mean, I think that it's really imperative. If there's any way that we can be alerted and that we know how these things are going on ahead of time, somehow that got way past us and I wasn't aware who was at those tables. I know we had the discussion in twenty fifteen or so or something like that around. And we articulated some groups that we knew needed to be at the table that, that ended up not being at the table. We've talked about that. But just moving forward, how do we make sure, as Eileen said, that we're, making sure that we're incorporating all of those groups? I know Vanessa and, and Allison and I are working on some things and moving forward. I know that we're, we've been able to, to work on some things, but just keeping that in mind. Deaf and hard of hearing, being in Flint, I definitely understand, I'm learning every day how access to information is a barrier for, for that population. So whatever we can do to, to educate ourselves on that population and the barriers that they experience, to me, it's been an eye-opener. Just recently, we met with a big group and I learned so much from that, that group. The child, the childcare funding, we talked about that, I think at our last meeting. There were some questions that were raised. I can't remember what questions we asked. But if there's any other presentations that we can have on, on the funding for childcare that's available to those facilities as well as to parents. I've worked in early childhood programs. available to those facilities as well as to parents. I've worked in early childhood programs, and I do know that that is a huge barrier as we talk about early childhood. We know that a parent's having access to affordable childcare, like we said, is, is a huge barrier. And when we have things like Medicaid work requirements and all of that, that's, that's at play, it only compounds that. The partnership district, we talked about that a little bit before, we had the presentation from, where we're talking about employees, but at the same time, obviously, this is a very critical situation. We definitely need our partnership districts to work. We need liaisons that can be in buildings, that can help schools to identify problems, as well as help them to walk through solutions to those problems. We need to recognize, and I think that we do, that there is no cookie-cutter approach to this. The communication has to be back and forth, and it has to be where the liaison is talking to the districts, the districts are talking to their partners, and, and then they're able to bring that information back to MDE, and, and MDE acting accordingly to, to that information, and that, we know that that is very critical. I think that that's about it. One, one question that I do have is the Health Committee? I have not heard anything. Are they, has there been a meeting?
The what?
Well, I'm looking at Kyle, but I don't know if Kyle is still the Health Committee, the school health. Okay, okay, okay. It's Richard and I, we haven't met since the new board has, but it was always someone within the department that helped us to convene those, but.
Yes, Whitney Van, she would call, she would call them.
Yep. Yeah, did she go out? And someone went out on maternity leave, and I don't think that we-
She had gone out, then she came back.
Okay.
We'll get, we'll get some information on that in, in the board room, Pam?
If the board would like to meet again, we can, we have staff ready to organize it for you.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Anyone else today? Future meeting dates? State Board of Education, future meeting dates, next month is Tuesday, September 11th, 9:30, regular meeting, followed by Tuesday, October 9th, 9:30, regular meeting. And then in November, Tuesday, November 13th, regular meeting at 9:30, and then Tuesday, December 11th, regular meeting at 9:30. Tentative agenda items for future meetings. For the next meeting, if there are specific items that the board would like included, let us know. And for future meeting items, I have three things that I heard today. Teacher advocacy, teacher evaluation and advocacy efforts, purpose of public education, and funding for childcare and development programs. If there are any other additional items for topics, please let us know.
I, I think that we should have a little talk about how we can cooperate a little more with the legislature.
Yeah. Okay. Legislative outreach.
Or how they could cooperate more with us.
Well, I think that would be wise.
But sometime, well, that we can't control, but we can control how we work with them.
Better together.
Getting on the same page.
Getting on the same page would be helpful. All right.
And I, for the next agenda item, I mean, I would like to see what the guidelines are and revisit the, the guidelines with regard to the Marshall Plan. So, that could be on the next agenda if, if it's not resolved before then.
Okay, I will do that. All right.